This is a calling to order the meeting of the National Board of Education. I apologize to anyone, our agenda, the agenda I got to 6:30, but it is 5:30. We're meeting via Zoom due to following social distancing guidelines as the governor has requested due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Mr. Guarino, could you please call the roll?
Yes, I may not call this in the exact orders from memory, but I'm trying to get the voting order correct. But Mr. Guarino is here. Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Zeeem? Ms. Sandra Zeeem?
Here.
Is here, okay.
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Present.
Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Odin?
Here.
Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Dr. Mosley?
Here.
Is here. Dr. McKinney? Dr. McKinney?
Here.
Okay. Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Here.
We have Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Ms. Bagley?
I'm here.
Mr. Chopra? Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Ms. Hines?
Here.
And also with us are our student representatives, Mr. Norris?
Here.
Mr. Gao?
Here.
And who did I miss? Mr. Tobin is... You're on mute?
Okay, it's fine.
Okay.
Bobby Bagley here?
Yep, Ms. Bagley is here as well.
I am too.
And Dana O'Gara.
And Dana O'Gara, I apologize, Ms. O'Gara.
Sorry, it's quite, it's quite the group this evening.
Intensive, yes.
Okay. You don't have the book with you, do you, Mr. Guarino?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I don't.
So we don't have the prayer then, to read the prayer?
When I say Mr. Richard, Mr. Keith Richard is here too, I've missed him. Mr. Richard, okay.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Okay. And then the Pledge of Allegiance, I don't particularly want all of us to stand for the pledge because then everyone on, out there in computer and TV land will just see our stomachs. And that's not pleasant during this pandemic. So let's move right along. I forgot to read on our agenda that we're holding this meeting pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, Section 8, and Emergency Order Number 12, Section 3, regarding holding meetings remotely during the pandemic. So just want to get that on the record. So we actually have two presentations this evening. I'm going to ask attorney Jeff Tobin to go first briefly, and then Ms. Bagley from Public Health, if you don't mind going right after Mr. Tobin. Does anyone have any objections to that?
No.
I don't, I don't see any objections. So welcome, Mr. Tobin. If you could let the board know. Oh, you're on mute, Mr. Tobin. There we go.
Okay. Thank you very much for taking me on and adding me to an agenda in a, you know, it's hard enough to do meetings and to add something else. I've been working on school funding for a quarter century, and right now we're working on trying to give voice to school districts around this state in the convale case, which is pending in the New Hampshire Supreme Court. That's a case brought by some rural districts in southwestern New Hampshire challenging the state's failure to pay for what its duty is, which is constitutionally adequate education. And we want the New Hampshire Supreme Court to know that this is not just a problem for school districts in southwestern New Hampshire, but across the state. So we have joined, we have a great number of districts who've joined this, including Manchester, Derry, Concord, Keene, five regional school districts, a number of other districts of varying sizes and shapes around the state. At this point, we have, well, if NASHU joins us, we will have school districts that serve more than 30% of the students in the state. And I think the Supreme Court will pay attention to that. And the nub of it is, and I looked before this call, I looked at the numbers for NASHU, the problem is that our state relies on property taxes for funding schools more than any other state. And those property taxes, the rates for them vary greatly from town to town depending on how much property wealth there is in the town. And NASHU, which has the second largest student body in the state, as you all well know, has, on average, taking into account the size of your district, well below average property value per kid. So that means the taxpayers of NASHU have to work harder, have to sacrifice more in order to raise the money for their schools, especially since the state contributes so little. And the state, even if you count the statewide property tax, which for most of us just looks like a piece of our property tax, the state is only paying about 31% of the cost of schools. And local districts like NASHU are paying 62%, twice as much. And what is that, how does that play out? Well, for NASHU, even though you are frugal in how much money you spend on your, on your students, you pay a significantly higher tax rate than the people in Portsmouth do, who are able, because they have so much property wealth, to spend a lot more money per student. I'll just give you the numbers. In Portsmouth, the combined tax rate for education, the local rate and the state rate, is $6.48 per thousand. In NASHU, it's about $11 per thousand. But you spend a little more than $13,000 per kid, and Portsmouth spends $18,000 per kid. So they get to sell, to tax themselves at a lower rate and spend a lot more for their kids because the system is dependent on how much property there happens to be in each district. It's profoundly unfair. And one of the things we've learned in the last couple of years is that NASHU is in very good company. 77% of the kids in the state live in districts like NASHU with below average property values per kid. So taxpayers all over the place have, in those towns, have to spend more money just to keep up. They have to sacrifice more. There are a lot of property taxpayers in the state that are, sacrifice a lot and deserve a lot of recognition for that. So in this brief, which you, which I did send you, we lay all that out. We give a lot of examples of the unfairness in terms of tax rates and spending per kid that the current system mandates. And we're asking the, the New Hampshire Supreme Court, along with the, the convale districts, to tell the legislature to finally fix it. Now, I just want to say that this amicus brief is a one-shot thing. It doesn't commit you to any further involvement in the convale case. My colleagues and I who've been working on this are doing it pro bono, so it doesn't commit you to spend a nickel. It's just a way for you to give voice to the taxpayers, especially in your city, about the unfairness of the current system. And we hope you'll join it. I'm happy to ask any question, answer any questions you have. And so I think I'll stop and see what questions you have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tobin. I remember when you and Mr. Valinsky came down last year to give a wonderful presentation about how all of this works. I'm seeing Ms. Johnson and then Ms. Zeeem.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Sure.
A couple of questions here.
Sure.
I remember when I was back on the board in 2000, and then 2002, I was on the board of Alderman. Now, I remember then Mayor Streeter was saying that the money was going to dry up eventually because it was more intended for the property poor towns and cities. And we were getting, and I would say between $20 and $30 million, something like that. When did our money actually, do you, do you happen to know when our money was actually dried up in NASHU? Or couldn't somebody tell me?
Well, I can tell you what the trend was. Right after the Claremont cases 20-plus years ago, the legislature did put a little more money in, and ever since then, they've been retreating. And one of the things that you may know about is something called stabilization grants, which NASHU got, along with many other districts that again had lots of less property value per kid. Well, the legislature inexplicably in 2015 decided to start cutting those. So the districts that needed the money the most, the legislature started hurting again. So the legislature's basically stood still on this for a decade. And we have some data that shows as the cost of schools went up over the last decade, property taxpayers around the state are paying $500 million more than they were a decade ago. And the state is only chipped in about 32 million more. So the cost shifting has gotten a lot worse in the last decade. And that's one of the points we make in the brief, that not only is the state not, not meeting its duty, it's, it's retreating.
Well, I remember Portsmouth was considered a property-rich city, or town, whatever they are. NASHU was, Manchester was getting more than NASHU, and Manchester, bigger city. And I remember everybody was upset about that because NASHU was falling behind on getting the grants on this whole thing. Because I mean, it really does help. I mean, money can go to other places if you get more money in for the schools versus coming out of all of the taxes. Thank you for answering my question. It kind of gave me, brought back a little bit more of the history. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Zeeem, and then Mr. Guarino, did you have your hand up?
No.
No, okay. So Ms. Zeeem?
She, she's on mute. You're on mute.
Sandra, you're on mute, so press the spacebar. Okay. Nope.
She's still on mute.
Still on mute. Tara, can you unmute her, please? Tara, are you there, Tara?
I am, I'm trying to unmute her.
Okay. Sandra, are you able to click at the bottom left-hand corner of your screen? There should be a mute, unmute button. She's saying something about her screen is covering it up.
It might be on the top of, maybe if she just tapped her picture.
Yeah. If you tap, yeah, mine as well. If I click onto my picture, it asks me, but I'm not the moderator.
For my reason, I have no ability to do that for her today. I don't know why.
Okay. All right, we'll, we'll come back. Sandra, is your daughter still there? Can you find her? In the meantime, did anybody else have any questions for Mr. Tobin? My understanding, Mr. Tobin, is that you need us to give you an answer well before Friday?
Yes.
Because Friday is when you have, is your filing deadline?
Yes, yes, we're shooting to file on Friday. We absolutely have to file next Monday, but we need to have it ready. We need to know whether to put NASHU in it or not.
Okay. Mr. Guarino? Oh, go ahead.
I see Jessica Brown has her hand up.
Yep, Mr. Guarino was first, and then Ms. Brown, and if Ms. Zeeem comes back.
Okay. I would move to have the Nashwood District join the amicus for the convale lawsuit.
I'll second it.
Okay. So the motion to join was by Mr. Guarino and seconded by Ms. Johnson. Mr. Guarino, did you want, wish to speak to your motion?
I don't think I, I can add any, anything else that's been added to it right now, but I think it's the idea to do this because of the situation that, that our district is in.
Okay. Ms. Brown?
Thank you. I just have a question, and please forgive me because I just read this document this afternoon. So if we were to become part of this lawsuit, and the lawsuit, we win, where does that money come from? Would we have to raise taxes? Or do they more do a, is it the goal to make it more equitable long-term for the distribution of monies throughout the state? Where does that pot of money come from?
That's a great question, and that's up to the legislature to decide. The first thing they need to do is to figure out, to create a formula that actually pays for what they're mandating. One of the things in the brief that's, that I think is pretty interesting is the state's mandates that you do a lot of things, but pays for very little. So they need to figure out what the price is. And then they, the legislature has a lot of choices about how to raise the money. They could have a statewide property tax that everybody paid, so people in Portsmouth would pay more, most places people would pay less. There are lots of different ways to raise the money, and we're, that's really the legislature's job. It's up to the court to say the current system is unfair, it's unconstitutional. And then the legislature is supposed to figure out how to raise the money. That's their job.
Thank you, Mr. Tobin. Ms. Zeeem?
Thank you, I'm so sorry.
Oh, yay!
Oh, yeah. I'm bringing insanity here. Mr. Tobin, before I say what I want to say, I do want to thank you. I have to tell you, I don't hear of too many attorneys who do pro bono, and you obviously are an experienced attorney, and I just want you to know that from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate that you care enough about our kids to do that.
Well, thank you.
And those without, that I support you, no questions asked.
All right, well, thank you.
Well, thank you. I think we all owe you a debt of gratitude. We don't have too many people who, no, that's true, it's not kind. It may be kind as well. Mr. Tobin, the question I have is, when you're asking other schools to join this, this lawsuit, have you had, have you met with good success? I mean...
Yes, we have, and it's been, it's actually been very heartening. And, you know, I've been to, one of the most recent places I went was the Governor Wentworth Regional Schools District, which is a wealthy district. But they have one town in that district, Effingham, that isn't wealthy. So they have a situation where, you know, the sophomore in high school from Effingham sits next to the sophomore in high school from Tufton Borough, and they get the same education, but the parents in Effingham have to pay much higher taxes for the same education. So even places that, that don't suffer as much from the current system get its unfairness. So yes, people have been very supportive. And the other thing I have to say, and this is not totally relevant, but I really want to say it, in the last year and a half, I've been speaking around the state to lots of libraries and cafeterias and gyms and everything. I've met a lot of school board members. I tip my hat to all of you. It is really hard work. It's really thankless work. One of the things that I realize is that many local taxpayers don't, they don't see beyond their town lines, they don't see that you are stuck with what you're stuck with. And so people on, you know, boards of selectmen, city councils, aldermen, school boards, get hammered about their property taxes when you don't really have much control over it. So I appreciate your service in that regard.
Well, you know, Mr. Tobin, I've been on the board for 13 years, and I have to tell you, the worst time of the year is budget time, because it's always, what are we going to cut? Who's going to get hurt? And it's not like we have frivolous requests. It's not people asking for new Cadillacs. It's people asking for books and computers and, and things that my grandsons over in Windham did in abundance. So thank you so much.
Sure, sure.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Zeeem. Any other comments before we take a vote? I don't see any hands. So, Mr. Guarino, why don't you call the roll? So the motion is to join the convale amicus brief.
Yes. Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Zeeem? Yes.
Yes, she's, she's silent again, but I see her enthusiastically nodding.
Yep. Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Tobin. And please let me know what else you need from me.
Okay, we'll be sending you a final copy within the week, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks so much. Bye now.
Bye. And Ms. Zeeem, perhaps you could stay off mute for the duration, that way we don't have to go back and forth. Okay, Ms. Bagley, thank you so much for your patience, and thank you so much for joining us this evening. I'm really looking forward to hear what you have to say. So without further ado, Ms. Bagley from Public Health.
Yes, good evening, and thank you for having me join your meeting this evening. My name is Bobby Bagley, as was said, and I'm the Director of our Division of Public Health and Community Services for the City of Nashua. And I'm here to talk this evening with you about COVID-19, which you probably have heard quite a bit about on the news, hopefully through some of the information that we've put out through our daily updates to the city. And basically, basically to help bring a perspective as to why we've taken on the type of mitigation and containment efforts that we've taken on in the City of Nashua for, for Nashua, and then also for our greater Nashua region. So I'll start off with just some updates about COVID-19 right now. In the United States, we have a total number of cases of over 554,849, that's presumptive and positive cases that have come back through testing and screening. We currently have a total number of deaths of over 21,942 in the U.S. And one of the things that we are seeing is that there is a large number of individuals that are recovering from this disease, which is actually a good thing. But what we also see is that there is a population of individuals that are very vulnerable to this infection and that have adverse outcomes, health outcomes, even death. So that's at the, the national level. At the state level, what we see right now in New Hampshire is that we have a grand total of 985 cases across our different counties in the State of New Hampshire with 23 deaths that have been associated with this disease, which is at 2%, which for our population size of 1.3 million is actually good. That still is, that 2% is still a number of individuals that are people's family members, loved ones, you know, that have lost their lives to COVID-19, which our sympathies go out to. 2%, you know, is a low number, but it's a number that we don't want to get extremely high in our state. Out of the 985 cases that have been reported, 239 or 24% of those cases have recovered. So that's about a quarter of the cases. Total cases right now is 723 because of the 239 that have been recovered. We've had a 15% hospitalization rate, which is 152 individuals. We've tested over 10,000 in our state, and we've had about 5,000 specimens, over 5,000 specimens that have been submitted to our New Hampshire Public Health Laboratory, and there's about 125 of those tests that are now pending. We are currently monitoring over 2,275 cases in the state. So let's bring that down to what we're looking at in Hillsborough or in the Nashua area. So right now, it's reported that we have 88 cases in Nashua. And out of those 88 cases, our public health department is currently investigating 56 of those right now. And we have over 109 contact investigations that our public health department with some volunteers are actually working on. And so what does that, what does that actually mean? So out of the 56 current active cases, we actually will call those individuals to find out what their circumstances were for exposure to that virus. And those cases may range from individuals that are working in healthcare setting, first responders, individuals from our community that came into contact with COVID-19 at some point in time, and we find out who all else they have come into contact, who all else has come into contact with them. And so then we call and make sure that those individuals know the steps and the measures that they need to take to stop the spread of this infection. When we think about where we sit in New Hampshire, and when I watch, you know, the news and things on CNN, we look pretty good as a state. We're not out of the woods yet, however. In Wuhan, China, when this got started back at the end of December, it took them up until last week before they finally saw and considered themselves ready to go back and start opening up things. So we're talking almost four months. When we think about the mitigative measures that we've taken in New Hampshire, and I'm very happy about the fact that our governor, as hard as it was to make that decision to shut things down, to close our schools, you know, to close businesses, all of those things, as hard as those things may, may be for folks to understand, are the necessary things that were needed for us to slow down the spread of this infection. As I said, we've only had 23 deaths, still too many. And to also make sure that we could stop through certain factors such as social distancing, wearing of cloth masks, and making sure that we push out information so people understood just how contagious this disease is. So COVID-19, it's a, it's a novel. We call this a novel coronavirus, and we call it novel because it's new. It's usually, there, there are different types of coronaviruses, there's at least four different types. The common cold is a coronavirus. This one is new because it's crossed over from the animal into the human, and now it's transmitted human to human. So there was a combination of infectious things that happened to where now it's person-to-person spread. It's spread by respiratory droplets. So when we cough, sneeze, sing, shout, do anything that's really exciting, and things just kind of like come out of our mouths, we can spread it that way. It's also spread through hand contact. So if I cough in my hand and then I touch my phone, or I touch a doorknob, or I touch a desk, those surfaces are now contaminated with that virus, and people can then spread it again by touching with their hands, those objects, and then touching our faces, our mouths, our nose, and our mouths, and that's how this virus is transmitted. It's very infectious and very easy to spread. It's also a virus that is pretty fragile. And by fragile, what I mean is if we wash our hands with soap and water, we've killed it. If we wipe down those surfaces that are frequently touched by hands, we've killed it. And so we've put different measures in place to help slow and stop the spread of this infection, you know, in our communities. And some of those may seem to have been drastic measures, but they were the measures that were needed and measures that were taken that have actually allowed for us to see a smaller number of cases gradually occur rather than a huge spike of cases going up this way that would have been really unmanageable by our healthcare system, our hospitals, our nursing homes, and even us in public health. And so we've taken certain measures to slow it down. And so instead of having a steep spike up of cases, we're kind of rounding it out and even trying to flatten that curve so that it may take longer for the infection to occur in our communities rather than it going up like this. This, the measures and, you know, what we've seen in our city, in our region with the collaboration has been absolutely phenomenal. I've worked in public health for about 23 years, and we've had outbreaks. I don't know, you know, if you all remember when we had H1N1, but when we had that outbreak, it was something that hit us very fast, very quickly, just like the coronavirus did. And there were certain measures that we would put, that we put in place to try and help slow that down. Because we've had an opportunity to learn about how these infectious organisms work and what mitigative measures to put in place, we've learned what we can do to slow it down. And that's the whole goal. Until we get to the point where it's just done and it's just stopped. But we do know that's going to take a while before we get there. But in the meanwhile, we're going to continue with the measures that we take and that we've put in place right now with the, the objective of stopping this spread by slowing it down and allowing for individuals who, you know, are tested to understand and know that they need to isolate or quarantine themselves so that the spread of this infection does not so that the spread of this infection does not continue to occur in our community. If an individual does test positive, as I mentioned, we have our Public Health Nurses who do contact investigation and what individuals are taught about the virus is how it's spread. And the idea of putting themselves into quarantine and some people do, can choose to self-quarantine. Others, we ask to self-quarantine because they may work in situations or in environments where there are lots of other people that could be exposed to this viral infection. This viral infection is not kind to individuals who are over the age of 60, nor to individuals that have underlying health conditions. And what I mean by that is from the deaths that we have seen and from some of the infections where there are individuals that are hospitalized, they end up on ventilators, they end up in ICUs if they have underlying health conditions that their immune system just cannot deal with this infection. Others, we've seen, and I've done contact investigation myself, and I've learned just how, you know, different this virus actually presents in different individuals. Some people may not have any signs or symptoms at all. And we call that asymptomatic folks that can actually transmit this infection. Others may have very, very mild symptoms. Some have presented with just a tickle in their throat. Some have presented just with a runny nose. Some have presented with a cough. Some have had fever, some have lost their sense of smell and taste. Some have had just dizziness. Some people have lost their appetite. Others have had no fever and some have had fever. So it presents itself very differently from person to person. At one point in time, it was one of these things where you thought if a person had a nice, strong immune system that would help, you know, the infection not have such a heavy impact on that individual's body. But from some of the evidence that's shown from the CDC and from other cases, it, it just all depends, you know. Taking a bunch of vitamins or doing a bunch of things may not have or make a difference for some individuals and for others it will. Because of these things and because of the different presentation and because we know that we have vulnerable populations that can become extremely ill and some even die, the measures of the social distancing, of shutting down and closing the schools was something that was expedient, it needed to happen. And the timing of it, you know, as much as it seemed that, I mean, there, you know, a lot of opposition towards that could not have been at a better time for us in New Hampshire. And if we look at the State of New Hampshire and we look at Massachusetts, we look at Connecticut, New Jersey, New York, places where they had so much infection that when they did put those mitigative measures in place, it took a longer time for them to see a difference where they've had so much loss of life and so much of an impact in their hospitals. We have not had that in New Hampshire. And I want to say that we haven't because of the quick response in making sure we put measures in place that would actually slow this thing down. That's what's happened. And I know it was hard for the governor. I was one of these people that was sitting and I'm like, okay, so we've closed the schools. We've closed the restaurants. We've asked for no out-of-state travel. The next thing that we need to do is we need to ask people to stay at home. Because once the schools were closed and once we had restaurants closed and people were free, people were out and about and you really needed to break up that opportunity for people to gather together by putting this stay-at-home measure in place as well. So we're really actually now starting to see the impact of that. Last week, we actually saw a leveling out of cases where we were seeing cases going up in double digits from 40 to 60 to 70 to 90 per day. Last week, we saw 40, 50, 30, 40. And so it was sort of like a leveling out. We're still not out of the woods, however. We still have to maintain our vigilance with our social distancing. We still have to maintain our vigilance with making sure that we keep, you know, the restaurants and businesses closed for just a little bit longer so that, again, people don't start coming together and gathering until we get past the hump of what we expected to be a peak in infection rate for us in New Hampshire and for us in Nashua. We've done really well. We've had one cluster outbreak in a nursing home. And because, again, of the quickness and the response of public health with the staff at that, at that nursing home facility, that infection was cut down in half because they made sure that they separated out individuals who had infection and made sure that they tested folks to see what things looked like in that facility. We were able to slow that down. So our response has been really quick. It has been expedient. It has not always been favorable, but it has allowed for us to save lives by doing what we've done. We put out messaging every day. We give an update on what's happening in our state that allows for people to see what those numbers look like as well as what things look like in Nashua. And the continued work that we're doing collectively with our city division directors, which includes the school, fire, police, which includes the mayor's office, our Office of Emergency Management with Public Health, with our hospital as partners, with our community health centers working with us as well, as well as all of these other nonprofit organizations that have really come together collaboratively to work together to help support our community and help stop the spread of this viral infection in New Hampshire. And so I'm, I'm really proud of our city. I'm proud of what we've been able to do. And like I said, it's, it's in no ways where we're out of the woods yet. We still have to continue this. But Jess, we've been working so well together and the evidence is there for us. So much to the point where Manchester is looking at us and the state is looking at us for the model work that we've done down here. And so I commend, you know, our school department for partnering with us and working together with us, even to the point of getting Nashua High set up as an alternative care site. An alternative care site is something that we've put in our plans back in 2008. After we had the H1N1 outbreak, we used the schools as the facilities that could hold the most amount of people that would come in to get max mass vaccination. We also had the schools in our, in our plan, emergency preparedness plan as sites of dispensing prophylaxis if we had any other type of big outbreak. Well, it's come around. And so COVID-19 is that big thing that has been really due because there's always something like every some odd number of years and we knew something was coming and it just happened to be this novel virus. And so our school has always been designated as a site that would allow for large numbers of people to be able to come in and either be prophylaxed or treated. The alternative care site is designed so that if, and we, we are really hoping that we never, never have to use this. That's what we're praying and that's what we're hoping. But it's set up as a site that if there's a surge in cases to the point where our hospitals are not able to maintain their capacity at providing the services for the number of individuals that would be sick, the number of ventilators that would be needed, the number of ICU beds that would be needed, the number of med surg beds that we would be needed for critical care. The alternative care site will allow for us to get individuals that don't need that high level of care, intense care at the hospital, can be done at this alternative care site that's set up at Nashua High South. And I'm not sure if any, if any of you have had a chance to take a look at it, but it's designed so that the individual that has the lowest acuity or the lowest level of care needed for COVID response would be placed there and allow for beds to be open at both of the hospitals for the intense treatment that they would need on-site. The hospitals, what they're doing, again, so that we never have to get to using this alternative care site, is they're working as hard as they can and they've put in surge plans to help for them to expand their beds in the hospitals and using their other satellite sites so that maintain the surge capacity on their site at their facilities with their staff. The alternative care site would only be open if we max out both hospitals and fill all of those beds and all of those floors with individuals that need intense treatment. So we really appreciate the partnering with the school to be able to do this. And the staff over there and Dr. Mosley, you have to know that your staff over there have been working with us and they have been fantastic. And they've gotten that place ready, again, hoping that we don't have to use it. It is ready and we're getting the rest of the supplies that are needed over there so that if, in fact, we do have to meet that surge capacity, we can actually do that. So we, we're very thankful, you know, of the school partnering with us in that endeavor. We're also thankful that right now, although this is really hard too, for the students to be at home and I know it's a lot of work on the teachers during the, the distance learning. I used to teach at Riviera and I used to do online teaching. So I can, can kind of relate to some of the things that some of them are going through with this transition. But again, it allows for our kids, it allows for our teachers, it allows for our administrators all to be safe because people are at home rather than onsite at any of the schools, you know, in our district being exposed to a virus that can decimate our community. So I want to thank, you know, Dr. Mosley for his participation on our weekly calls. We have a call every single day at 10 o'clock and he's there to present on, you know, how the schools are doing and how, you know, whatever challenges, you know, are, are met. But how the staff and everyone is doing over there as well as hearing how collectively we're all working together to mitigate our circumstance with this COVID-19 event. And so that's the information that I have. If there's anyone that has any questions, I will take those now. And I hope that that was helpful.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bagley. I really appreciate hearing the update, especially about what's going on in Nashua. I'm sure members have questions. I see Ms. Johnson and then after her, we'll see if anybody else does.
Thank you so much for your presentation. It was wonderful. The mayor was on WMUR yesterday and he was talking about essential and non-essential employees. Do you happen to have a list of essential and non-essential employees that could be emailed to us? So when people talk to us, even in the city, because we're elected officials, you know, they kind of talk to everybody figuring that we all need to know. Is that possible?
We can get that out to you, yes. And just wanna, I'm sitting in a corner in my room and I back myself in and make myself a note that we make sure that we get that back out to you.
Because I kind of, yesterday, when he said what was essential and non-essential, it was kind of weird and I just want to see that what he said on TV and what he has on paper is actually the same. So I think it would be great.
Okay, and we'll do that. What we've had to do, you know, as far as with the city, there are some other departments that have individuals that are working from home. And there are some of us that are not able to work from home. So you can imagine that most of the public health staff, because it's a public health event, are considered the essential, you know, a part of that essential employee pool along with police and fire, AMR, you know, first responders, you know, are also included in that, that list. But as far as like our city departments, it includes folks like DPW. You still have to maintain, you know, the continuation of operation of some of our departments and some of our services in order for our city to continue to function. And what we've done is some of us have just modified, you know, how we're doing our work. So some folks that may be considered non-essential that don't have to be on-site, maybe working from home, whereas some of us are face-to-face, on the streets, doing different things that are needful in order for this city to continue to work.
Absolutely. And I appreciate everything you've, you're doing and I, I'm looking forward to having that list. Thank you so much for everything.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Does anyone else have a question for Ms. Bagley while she's here? Mr. Guarino.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have a question. I, I just want to thank her for, there was a lot of good information. And I just want to thank her for that update. It was very informative and I, I guess it, it helps alleviate a lot of the anxiety on my end. So I just want to thank her for that, for that update.
Very welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. And thank you very much, Ms. Bagley, for joining this evening. I appreciate you taking time out of your busy, busy schedule to come and let us know right from the, you know, source, what is going on. If there's anything you need from the board, please feel free to contact Dr. Mosley or myself and we will help you in any way that we can.
All right, great. Thank you.
All right, thanks so much. Oh, Ms. Gilio. Oh, she was waving goodbye. Got it. Anyone else? No? Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Bagley. Okay, moving along on our agenda. The next item is the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything that they would like to be removed from the consent agenda at this time? Yep, okay. In that case, I am looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Ms. Oden?
Move to approve the consent agenda. A second.
I'm seconded by Ms. Brown. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Guarino.
Hey, on the approval of the consent agenda, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Zim? Yes. Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Wait, are we missing someone?
Nine to zero, I apologize.
Okay, we have no items removed from the consent agenda. Does anyone have any communications outside the consent agenda? I don't see any. So the next item is the superintendent's comments. Dr. Mosley? Welcome.
Hey, everyone, how we doing? Just a couple of things. I mean, it certainly has been busy in the district, certainly transitioning to remote learning. I just want to start by saying thank you to all of the teachers out there who have put in countless hours for our kids. And that's not just preparing the curriculum, but also just being available to our kids and to our families. I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to the teachers who have been organizing our parades and, and really making sure the best that they can to reach out to our kids. I also wanted to thank the administrators for their time and effort, making sure that our kids are okay. And also central office directors and the assistant superintendents and, you know, Dana and Dan for all of their work and everything that they've done. I just really appreciate it. Just a couple of things in terms of updates. I will, I will be brief, but also want to make sure that there's some time for discussion. As Bobby Bagley said, that every day, you know, Saturday and Sunday, that we participate in a division meeting led by the mayor to get up, to get updates, to coordinate services, to coordinate supplies. And that is essential because we work as a division of the city, but we're also collaborating throughout the entire city as well. I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to my colleagues and to all the things that the mayor and the aldermen have done so far in this endeavor. As the board knows, there's been some publication of recommendation for expectations around instructional practices for our teachers. Also some, some guidelines around for our parents in terms of what to expect to being at home. Part of what I would like to just share publicly as we start to move into this remote learning is that the best thing to do is to develop routines with our kids to make sure that they're, you know, they follow those routines. You can certainly deviate from those routines over the weekend, but routines are important. The other thing that obviously we're going to hear a little bit tonight is around grading and assessment, what that feels and looks like at all three levels. We're also going to hear our, our survey results and how that is going to play out too. I also wanted to let the board know is that in addition to the city meetings, there's also meetings at the state level with the commissioner in terms of what is going on at the state and the next steps. For example, this, this Friday, we will hear more information and guidance from the governor around the end of the year, what that feels and looks like for all of our schools. I have not heard any correspondence about that yet. I know that there was something that was forwarded from a boardroom, I can't remember. But it was just around, I guess it was an interview that the governor gave and it, it indicated that it appears that the extension for having school out is going to continue. it, it, it indicated that it appears that the, uh, extension for having school out is going to continue. Uh, uh, there's also, um, some other things that we have to talk about as we start to move into the month of May, uh, particularly around the end of year. Uh, we have kids who are coming in and that need to be registered. So now we're developing an online process or a remote process to do that. We also have kids who are transitioning from our middle schools to our high schools. But more importantly, we have scheduled events for these kids, uh, so that they can enjoy the last events as they are in middle school and transitioning into high, high school. What we've been working on is ways, creative ways, I say you have to be creative in this day and age to help those kids, uh, transition from our middle schools to our high school, but also have that, what we would like to say goodbye moment for these kids as well. Obviously, we can't have our eighth grade graduation or anything like that, but certainly some events that we can do that. So we're collaborating and doing that piece. Uh, at the athletics, we're, we're into the springtime, uh, we have to think about some ways that, uh, get that information out in terms of when, if it's going to, going to be an abbreviated season or not. At this point, I don't have the answers to that. We have to work with the New Hampshire Athletic Association on that, but also Lisa Jengris would give us more information on that. Uh, we've been in a hold and wait, a wait and see mode so far, but clearly as we start to move into May, uh, there are some, some, uh, questions around that. Uh, the other piece that we're looking at too is the end of the year activities, uh, prom. I know prom is a big thing. I know graduation's a big thing. Uh, we also want to make sure that we're safe in doing that too. Uh, so we have to think about some ways and be creative to doing that. I see Keith is here and certainly Nate has been working on that as well. And certainly that's, that's on the docket. Uh, I also, I'm reading from my papers here, so I apologize for looking away. Um, would, would like to, uh, make sure that, uh, talk about changes and, and modifications, that that communication is coordinated district-wide, but also available uh, to our public. Our platform, our pulpit for that communication rests, rests in our website and we want to make sure that if there's questions out there or anything like that, uh, that people can go to our website. I, I recognize that this is a, a interesting time in our lives, everyone's lives. We're balancing our work and our families. We're using our own internet connectivity and so, um, we ask that we, we do the best we can and, but also um, be patient with each other and, and respond and, and support. So, um, I thank the board for everything and certainly willing to, um, you know, be collaborative in any way with the city and with, uh, anyone. So I just want to say again, thank you to the staff. You've been great. Um, I, we see the YouTube videos, we see the things on the Twitter. It's just really positive and I know the kids are, are disappointed that they can't see their teachers, but I just want to say thank you to the teachers. You, you, you've been great and the administrators, uh, um, you know, directors, assistant, uh, superintendents, principals, you've just been really great assistant superintendents. So.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. Um, I, I can speak for myself, but probably many other parents when I say that, um, the teachers have been outstanding, um, over the last few weeks. I cannot imagine how much time and effort they're each putting in. Um, I'm just absolutely blown away. So, um, the next item is the board response to the superintendent's comments. Did anyone have any comments or questions for Dr. Mosley regarding what he has just said? Um, I see Ms. Johnson and then Mr. Guarino. Did I miss anybody else's hand? No? Okay.
Thank you. I just want to comment on the graduation that if in fact, we cannot do it inside, like I call it the Verizon Center yet, that maybe we can find a outside facility where we're out more like, we used to do it home and stadium, but I know we've grown. Maybe something like Northeast Delta Dental Stadium where it's outside and you maybe have a little bit more room. I don't know if there's going to be social distancing, but I'm hoping by the time the warm weather comes, as I read things, that they're hoping the virus will die down. So maybe the fresh air and the warmth might kill any viruses. So that might be an option, um, outside. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank Dr. Mosley for that update, uh, and all of his efforts, uh, in this emergency. Um, and I also want to thank everyone in the district administration and secretaries and custodians. I especially also want to thank all the teachers for everything they're doing, um, keeping our, uh, the spirits up for our kids, uh, and the Nashua Police also who have led the parades. I saw, I just want to mention, I saw the Sunset Heights Parade and it was great. And I saw the Smurf Mobile, so I had to make sure I mentioned the Smurf Mobile. And, uh, so we, like Dr. Mosley said, you know, teachers have been great keeping things positive. And so I will, I too want to thank all of our teachers. They've been great. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino, and, um, thank you, Dr. Mosley, for letting us know, um, that you're looking into things like, um, spring activities and graduations. I look forward to hearing um, from you what you think the best options are, um, at perhaps our next board meeting or hopefully, uh, you know, the, the one after that. So, thank you so much.
Heather?
Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, that's okay. Um, I just want to thank all of the staff for all they have done to keep that connection with our kids. I've, uh, I've spoken to teachers who have been in the parades. I've watched some of them. Uh, firsthand, I, I saw one come through, uh, a budding neighborhood here and the excitement of the kids and the teachers. It was equal. The teachers were excited, as excited to see the kids as the kids were excited to see the teachers. So I want to thank all of them and I know some of them have made videos and sent those out to the, the students. So thank you. Every teacher I've spoken to have said they're putting more hours in with remote learning than they have ever put in. So thank you to all of them. I, I know that it's really hard not to have those personal relationships with kids that they have in the classroom. We can never duplicate a classroom, uh, online, but boy, they're trying every way they can to make sure that our kids stay connected. So thank you to all of them.
Thank you, Ms. Odin. Okay, uh, so now it's time for the student member of the board comments, and I am so glad to see you, uh, Mr. Gao and Mr. Norris. Uh, welcome back. Um, uh, Mr. Gao, would you like to begin and then Mr. Norris?
Oh, I'd love to, um, first of all, I would love to start off thanking, um, all teachers, all members of the board, all of the staff of the Nashville School District, really for just adapting to these unprecedented times. And really, um, as a student, your support, it's apparent, um, the, 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 the extra hours teachers are putting in, um, just having these Zoom calls like this. Support in this. So I'd like to, um, speak a bit on the grading system. I know that a lot of talk has been going on about that. As you all already know, um, many students in Nashua do not have access to adequate equipment for online learning. Um, Nashville High School South's math department recently conducted a survey and found that seventy-five to fifty percent of students in the math department at South, um, participated daily, which is extremely low. At the foundations level, only twenty-five to ten percent participated daily. So these statistics, of course, they suggest a movement to the pass fail grading system. However, at the same time, um, students, especially at the AP level, have been working extremely hard to get the high grades, the A pluses that they deserve. And these definitely do need to be distinguished in some way. So these arguments both of their own merit and must be considered, but I'd like to add a bit of a, a, a different, um, viewpoint to the situation, one that's in support of moving to pass fail grading for the remainder of the year. So, um, personally, I'm a member on the Class Rank Task Force. And the reason I'm on this is because I strongly believe that the, really the goal of schools, the goals of the education system is to educate students. And therefore, students, our number one focus in school should be our learning. Um, not necessarily, you know, beating our peers, not necessarily th- this letter grade that we receive. It's really our learning. And, um, changing to the grading system to pass or fail for the remainder of the year, this is a, a golden opportunity for us to try something new and to test how students may respond when they're prompted to excel through self-motivation. So few private schools do this. Um, some don't even have grading at all, giving students the opportunity to really learn and understand that their learning isn't just for a grade, but for their future. So I feel like that, um, this pass fail, um, grading system, we don't really know what's going to happen from this. We don't know how students are going to respond, but I would like to offer that it's a really great experience to test this response. Um, this is a, again, a golden opportunity for us to see how may perhaps students, um, when we take out this, this pressure of having this grade involved, perhaps students, we'll, we'll see them collaborating more, we'll see them being more involved in the classes. Um, and perhaps, you know, we'll, we'll really, um, ignite more passions in them or, or just encourage them to be self-motivated for their own personal excellence. So I just want to encourage, offer that viewpoint and, um, encourage the, the board to really consider that. Thank you.
Sorry, I was on mute. Thank you, Mr. Gao. Uh, Mr. Norris?
Uh, thank you. Um, so I'm just going to touch on a few things to, tonight. Um, so again, I think the teachers have been doing a great job. I'll be, I'll admit, I was a little wary of how online learning was going to go when a district that was so big and that we really had no plan in place before this, but I think it's actually worked really, really well considering the circumstances. And I, I commend our teachers, our administrators, our board member, everybody who was involved with that. Um, uh, so now I'll go on to, uh, the canceling events in sports. So obviously, it's, it stinks that we had to cancel winter sports in the middle of playoffs and spring sports and everything involved.
Go ahead, Mr. Norris. I think we've taken care of it.
Uh, yeah, so obviously, everybody's mad and everybody wanted to continue on these things, but I think we all acknowledge the dangers of trying to continue these spring sports and I, as, as much as it's bad and as much as we want to continue playing, uh, I think it was the right decision to cancel all these things and I think we should be wary of starting them back up until we're sure that the risk can be totally mitigated. Um, and then I'm going to talk about, uh, the grading system and going to pass fail too. So I kind of took a different kind of stance toward this. So, um, I acknowledge that obviously we have to try to reduce the stress of students because obviously this is a crazy time we're going through now and seems that everything in life is being, uh, surrounded by and absorbed in, uh, by the coronavirus pandemic. Um, but I've actually talked to a couple of college students who have gone to pass fail in their schools now, uh, as they move to online learning and they kind of discussed how it, the idea did make them less stressful, which was, I guess, uh, good in the long run, but it, uh, their work quality tended to suffer because if they had a grade that was good enough to pass and they knew that they would pass with, uh, a quality of work that was, uh, less than what they would be doing in class, then they just wouldn't try as hard on a sign. Um, and also to that point, I think, I, I see a problem with the full year and semester classes, especially with transitioning to pass fail classes for the rest of the year, just to the fact that you've worked either three quarters of the year or a quarter of the year already to get, build this grade up and build this up. And now it's going to be just turned into a pass or a fail. So all those kids who are trying to get into colleges and everything, that could affect your GPA, could affect what college you go to. Just, um, just something to think about. Um, and so obviously, it can be hard. This is going to be a difficult decision to figure out where we go from here, but, um, I don't know if a compromise would ever be possible. I know it might be a logistical nightmare to try to get this to work, but whether it was a class-by-class basis, a peer-by-peer basis, a level-by-level basis, if there was some way to ask kids, be like, okay, do you want to go to pass fail? Do you think that it would benefit your learning? Do you think that it would benefit your, uh, benefit your learning environment as a whole? Um, not just students as a whole, but break it down into individual and classes. Um, so I'm not necessarily against pass fail as a whole, but I think instituting it in the middle of the year when you've already had students work eat three quarters of the year, a quarter of the year, to try to get these certain grades and get into this certain position, um, I think would be a shame. But, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norris, and thank you, Mr. Gao. I appreciate both of your perspectives um, on this matter. I think it's important for us to hear from kids um, as we move forward with these discussions, uh, because frankly, you guys know um, more than us about what's going on with the, the high school students. Um, so, um, the next item on the board, and both of you, if at any time you have a comment, raise your hands and I will call it. Um, uh, moving forward, um, the Committee on Budget. Uh, Mr. Guarino, do you have anything to report on the Committee on Budget?
I don't, uh, but I did notice that the calendar has, I thought the calendar ha- has a, um, a, a meeting, uh, scheduled.
Yes, later. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I also know, I also, I guess I have a question for council or for maybe administration, um, regarding a public hearing for, uh, budget. I know that in the past, we've had public hearings for our budget and, uh, I believe they're required by state law. Um, however, if, if the aldermen have a public hearing, uh, on the budget and this, the uh, school department's budget is included in that, I'm wondering if we're covered under that. Because I noticed they have a public hearing scheduled for their budget. So, um, I'm wondering if we could forego our, our traditional public hearing and, and use that as a public hearing required by law, but I'm not a hundred percent sure because I'm not a lawyer. But so someone who's had e- e- experience in this or, or who might know about this can tell us, tell us more.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. I did want to discuss that later in the agenda. Um, I have some proposed calendars for picking up um, some of our essential meetings. Um, and I have, um, gotten advice from council on the question of public hearing. Um, so I would like to discuss that as well with the, with the, um, board when we get to that point on the agenda. Um, Committee on Finance and Operations. Ms. Odin, do you have anything for us tonight?
Well, no, not really. There's not a report as we did not need a meeting in April and I'm sure Mr. Donovan paid all our bills. Um, our next meeting is scheduled for, it's a Zoom meeting on Tuesday, May 12th at six thirty.
Thank you, Ms. Odin. Uh, Committee on Policy, Ms. Bishop, do you have anything this evening?
I was going to say the same thing. We haven't had a meeting on policy, um, but it looks like we're going on the next month, so we'll have some updates at the meeting.
I, um, I'm having trouble understanding your audio, but it sounds like you said we might have one next month.
Yep.
Yep, okay, great. Um, I apologize, there's people in my house because other people live here. Um, okay. Um, Committee on Curriculum and Evaluation, uh, Ms. Brown?
Oh, yes, uh, thank you. We did have a meeting on Monday, April thirteenth and we, I'm sorry. Today's April thirteenth, sorry. On Wednesday, April eighth, and we had a nice presentation from the district from, uh, Dr. McKinney and Ms. Fitzpatrick on the newly issued guidelines and parent expectations for the district learning protocols. Um, we talked about, um, the remote learning school week, how's that going, a generalized schedule, also following those guidelines to try to keep your family and children on some kind of a schedule, whatever works for your family. Um, it doesn't necessarily have to be an, you know, eight to noon option, but it has to be something that, um, it could be, but it's going to work best for all families if you can keep some kind of regiment in your life. Um, let's see, we went on to talk about, um, the grading systems for the elementary and middle schools. Um, when those report cards are going to come out and the process by which we are supposed to go for, um, parent communication, which that information is all available on the website, pretty clearly. Um, the, I look, would encourage people to look up the TOPS Policy KE. So, um, with that, we did have a beginning discussion on the middle school grading for trimester three and also the April, um, the grading for high school in the fourth quarter. Um, I would be happy to make a recommendation right now to start the discussion for middle school grading, or do you think it would be more appropriate to combine that with the high school um, question later for discussion purposes?
So, my understanding- So my understanding was that your committee voted to make a recommendation to the board that the board adopt, pass fail for the middle school. So perhaps a motion.
So I just wondered if you wanted to make it now or later. All right.
Yeah, I would say now for middle school because it's what your committee decided. And then the discussion for that, and then later in the agenda for, um,
all right.
High school, because I don't think we had the information in time for the curriculum meeting.
So, correct. So, um, based on, um, the information provided at the meeting on April 8th, I move that we recommend to approve the pass fail grading for the middle schools for the third trimester, uh, here in the Nashville School District.
I'd second that.
Okay. So just to quibble with the motion, the motion would be to approve pass fail, not to recommend to approve.
I apologize. I will, uh, I will amend my emotion. I would move that we approve to pass fail grading for middle schools for trimester three in the Nashville School District.
Thank you. I see you, Ms. Johnson. One moment, please. Um, did you, so that was made by, Ms. Brown and seconded by Ms. Timmons. Um, Ms. Brown, did you want to speak to your motion before we open the floor for discussion?
So the recommendation was based on two primary reasons, the time sensitiveness of the issue, because we just started a new trimester here in, um, for the middle schools. So it made sense to invoke a pass fail option as soon as possible rather than waiting, um, another month. The other thing that came up was the, uh, there was a survey sent out to the middle school teachers and, um, the data suggested that at the Elm Street Middle School and at Penacheck Middle School, the teachers were highly in favor of switching to a pass fail system. It was split 50 50 at the Fairgrounds Middle School. And that's where, because the teachers seemed like they were in favor of it, that is our primary reason for, thinking that it could be a good model.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I have a little bit of concerns with just a pass fail. And I mentioned it, um, in the, um, curriculum meeting. That's great pass or fail. We're also going to have students that's kind of borderline that aren't quite, um, in the past and they're not failing. Kids who come and sign on all the time, they pass, they're going to do good. You're going to have students that aren't coming on at all. We know that they're going to fail, but what about the ones that are in the middle that are having difficulties? Where are we going to put them in a pass or fail category? You can't. And I believe that we should be also, the teachers should be able to have comments here going home to parents in this whole thing, because especially if a student is having issues, having trouble um, with let's say math or whatever else the subject is. So just a pass or fail is not going to help that one right in the middle who's having a hard time. So I think we need to, figure something else out other than a pass or a fail. Thank you.
Sorry, I keep muting myself because I have a family. Um, so, Mr. Gao?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, yes, Mrs. Johnson, that's a really good point. And, um, reading the meeting notes, that the South teachers and Mr. Richards had, um, I noticed that a audit section in between pass and fail could be instated. And what that audit session essentially meant from my understanding is that, um, it's exactly addresses your concern where there's, uh, this area between pass and fail and students in that section, they can, this, this can be, the, the, um, nitty gritty details can be solved out later, but one of the potential solutions is saying that if you're in the audit category, you can potentially move on to the court, to the next course, but take some supplementary classes that will prepare you for that next level.
Thank you, Mr. Gao. Ms. Odin?
Yes, thank you. I just want to say my computer froze, so I've been locked out of the meeting for a little bit, but my technology person came in and fixed everything.
Okay, so, um, I'll catch you up very quickly. Um, we were talking about the committee on curriculum and evaluation. Ms. Brown made a motion to approve pass fail grading for the middle schools for trimester three, uh, seconded by Ms. Timmons, as was recommended by her committee. She spoke, um, in favor of it based on the information from the committee. Ms. Johnson expressed some concerns. Um, and Mr. Gao suggested, um, that an audit middle option might be, um, helpful.
Okay, thank you. I would like to speak to it.
Okay.
Quite frankly, uh, I think we should table this uh, until we can have another meeting. I think we need more information. And, um, when I look back at April vacation, I think we moved on that too fast. Uh, I, uh, reading the comments coming in, what does the parents, I think it was a parent that said, you know, why don't you take two days from vacation, two or three days, add it on to a weekend and you would have a break of four or five days and you still would get out of school earlier in June. And I thought that is a nice option. You, you, you know, it's not a matter of having winners or losers. Everybody got something from that. And, uh, if we had taken it, our time, maybe we could have had that as an option rather than just a yes, no vote. And I think this needs a little bit of fine tuning. I, uh, I got a, a, a very nice email from one of our middle school teachers. And I guess there is quite a rumor going around the middle schools that if they adopt pass fail, there will be a new rubric that they will use for pass fail. Whether that's true or not, I don't know. But another thing that was mentioned was before they took the vote, they only had 25 minutes to respond to the survey. So it really wasn't possible to have discussions with their teammates and colleagues about the issue. So here again, I think rather than rush to make a decision, I think we ought to have more input and research on this and see if there's not a compromise. I, I, I'm looking at the high school and I, I, uh, I'm not ready to vote on the high school either, but I, I would like some clarification as to whether the administration is looking to have a new rubric should our middle schools go to pass fail. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Odin. Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Hi, um, on Friday, um, the administrators, um, curriculum, uh, liaisons and some teachers got together to discuss how to move forward with pass fail if that was the case. The rubric that Ms. Odin is speaking of is a simple rubric that has passing means that you have participated and understood the materials and that's 60% or higher. And a fail is 59% or lower, which means that you have not participated, you have not done any of the work and you haven't reached out for help. Now, earlier, everyone was praising the teachers. The middle school teachers don't just say, yep, they didn't do it. That's it. There's a lot that goes into reaching out to students and students reaching out to teachers. And they don't just say the assignment is due on Wednesday and a kid comes to them on Thursday on the classroom and says, I just couldn't do it yesterday. I didn't have a device available. The teacher then makes allowances for that, but the rubric is a simple rubric of these things constitute pass, this constitutes fail. Through the conversation with all of the teachers on Friday, the decision that they came to, which was the proposal is that teachers know that the students are used to the way they gr- grade and the rubrics they use within their classroom. So the teachers were going to continue to use the rubrics they use in their classroom for the students so that they could see what, how their progress was. And then at progress report time and at report card time, a pass or a fail would be indicated based on their work throughout that trimester. But while they're in class, working with the teachers, they're going to continue to use the same rubrics the teachers have been using right along. And the reason the teachers came to that conclusion was that they felt like so many changes had already taken place. If we tried to institute too much more change, it's going to just stress kids out. And the idea of going to pass fail was to reduce stress for parents and students. So, um, within that, plan is a compromise because teachers did not want to just put P or F on individual assignments. They wanted to be able to continue with the grading in the class so students would understand where they were and how they were doing. And also do the pass fail so that more students have the opportunity to pass. Because if it's 60 or higher, more students have the ability to pass. And if they don't have a device available or, um, I, at a certain time, or they have illness in the family or other mitigating factors in the family, allowances are made for that. That's what middle school teachers do, whether the kids are in front of them in a classroom or in front of them in Zoom.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzpatrick. Um, Ms. Bishop? Go ahead, Ms. Bishop.
Just a quick question. With the, with the pass fail rubrics and forgive me if this has been answered, my internet keeps cutting in and out. Technology. Um, so, and I know we're not in college, these are high school kids, these are middle school kids, but I remember with the pass fail grades um, at the college level was if it was a C or below, it was a, it was a non-pass the class, so it wouldn't necessarily be at that 60 mark, but it would be a little bit higher. So the incentive to continue working would still be there. It's just, you know, a wider catch. Would that be something that we could look into?
I think that the reason that the teachers picked that 60 mark is because for better or for worse, our current grading system allows students to pass with a D minus and that's a 60. For better or worse, I'm not saying that's a good thing, but that the current grading system, D minus is a 60 and that is technically passing. So that's where that number came from.
I'm just wondering because people are worried about the kids being engaged or not being engaged. If we increase what the fail is, maybe we would continue to have them. Sorry.
Okay. That's okay. We're losing you.
Can I make a recommendation?
It would encourage kids to stay engaged instead of just clicking in and signing on and then be up today.
Excellent. Thank you for, um, doing that. I think turning off the video and using the audio helped tremendously with bandwidth.
I couldn't hear that last part. I, I heard Jennifer speaking a little bit, but I didn't hear the lead in. But I just get a, I'm, was writing some of that down. I just couldn't hear it. This is Jamal speaking. I turned off my video so that she could come in better, but I didn't hear the.
Ms. Bishop, are you able to unmute yourself and share?
Yeah. Um, I was asking if, if we're worried about kids being engaged in the whole process, if it was just pass or fail, we would lose more kids to the, the disengagement. If we increased what the failing score was, if it kept kids engaged and still motivated to turn and work timely and with care.
Please go ahead, Dr. Mosley.
I think it's a very good question, um, that misses, that Ms. Bishop is posing. I think that, you know, to like anything, uh, it's never going to be perfect. The first time we roll it out. I think that if there are some teachers that have concerns around the criteria for pass fail, we can certainly massage it, work, work with those individuals. I, the, the challenge for the board tonight is whether you want to continue with the traditional system of what we have right now or move to a pass fail. There was a, and again, when we draft, draft the matrix for a criteria for pass fail, it's a draft. Certainly it, it's a plan to, to, to discuss. Um, I, I would feel more comfortable working with the union, uh, having their feedback, uh, and certainly talking, have a little bit more discussion around that matrix with the building administrators too. And with the teachers as well, uh, it wouldn't be an edict coming down from myself or Donna. It would be certainly something that's homegrown grassroots stuff and that the teachers feel comfortable doing. I think the challenge really is that because we're in this remote environment, we have kids coming from different perspectives and instruction, technology and resources. For example, we have kids who have struggled with math who are now submitting math assignments like, you know, um, Einstein and kids who are, you know, they have the, the necessary you know, resources at home to, uh, get support around writing, whereas other kids do not. So part of what I believe the genesis of this pass fail is a compromise between those kids that have the resources enough, but also the environment. Kids cannot get extra help the way they used to. So this is one way of addressing some of the inequalities that that exists at the middle school. This is middle school. It stays in middle school. Um, the last time I checked, not too many colleges checked there, not to say that middle school isn't important. I was a middle school teacher at one point, but colleges are not necessarily, um, you know, checking their seventh grade English assignment either. So it's perspective and also for our, for our parents who need that level of relief, support and structure.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Mosley. I see Ms. Timmons and then Ms. Fitzpatrick.
I have a, I have a question for Ms. Fitzpatrick. Um, can we hold off on a little bit? Um, that's, thank you for asking because that's why I raised my hand. I know that board members have heard from teachers, but I can also tell you that the feedback that I have gotten from teachers is that we just started third trimester. If we're going to go with pass fail, then we need to make a decision because what they don't want is to go three or four weeks doing grades and then be told they have to change to pass for, uh, pass fail. So, um, the teachers, um, people were invited to participate in the meeting on Friday and, um, actually the survey ran more than 24 hours. So the 25 minute thing is probably not accurate. It ran more than 24 hours. And, um, I actually got the final numbers from the principals on Sunday morning and it was put out on Friday. So I, it's unfortunate to hear that some teachers feel like they haven't been involved in the process. And I wish that we could get 100% consensus, but if you looked, for example, at the high school results, you know that there's never going to be 100% consensus on any of these topics. I just want to do what's best for the kids and the teachers. And I'm concerned that holding off, you know, for another two, three, four weeks until we have another meeting, um, and then make a decision could be more stressful for people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzpatrick. Um, I saw you, Ms. Johnson and Ms. Dean. I wasn't sure if I saw Ms. Gilio a moment ago. No. Okay. So Ms. Johnson, then Ms. Dean, please.
Thank you. Um, we don't have a copy of any of this to see, um, the draft of what, I don't remember. Did we get a draft of any of this to see the grading system? No. You see, I think this is the problem sometimes. I mean, I'm getting, I got an email from, I mean, I'm sitting right here by my printer. So anything that comes over, I can print everything immediately. I mean, even with the pass fail and the GPA for the high school, I've got, um, questions coming to me. I got a question here coming to me about, did we see anything? I think on this pass fail, I, I agree with, um, Joshua that, um, there has, I think there has to be an audit in here. I don't think it's just an easy pass fail. And I think we need to kind of get more of a little bit more input. And I know time is of the essence here with everything. It's an unfortunate thing that meetings have been, um, canceled. But you know, in order to, to make an informed, the right decision here, because these are students who, some of them are hanging by a thread because they might not be able to be adapting to this. We don't know about the home lives. You know, we're going to go back into everything that everybody says. And just to fail somebody who might, we might be able to bring up with a type of an audit system. We have students that are passing. I think I'm surprised that a D minus is, is passing. Oh my God. I, you know, a C or a C minus usually was passing a D minus. That tells me that that child needs more instruction that we're not giving that child in class. And we're just kind of, I hate, people hate when I say it's either a social push or whatever push is, is that because when these students fail at this point and when they go through high school and we can't get them to the level that is expected of them in the middle school, then when, at the more we push them along, we're not doing a service to them. We're doing a disservice to them. And being a parent whose kids have grown up and it's gone through the system and even back then, I don't think it's fair to the students. I don't think it's fair to the. I don't think it's fair to the students. I don't think it's fair to the parents. And I think that we, as a board, need to really take a little bit of thinking here and get some proposals in front of us, so we get to see what it's going to look like, pass fail, would comments, pass fail audits, would the teachers be able to make comments? And I'd like to see a little bit, maybe more comments. I mean, we went through this whole survey, which in my opinion was a complete disaster in a certain extent of it. And I've been going through the numbers all weekend long and calculating everything. You know, this should have been put in our, in our packets to be able to see this, to see each middle school and what they have said. Not, it doesn't have to be every teacher. It could be the consensus. The principal gives us the consensus of what, how many said this pass fail, how many said pass fail, maybe with an audit, but we're not getting that. So how do we, as a board, make an informed decision? And we're professionals too, just like our administrators. So I I really would like to get a little bit more information. I agree with Mrs. Oden. Thank you.
I did it again. Okay. Ms. Zee, thank you, Ms. Johnson. I saw Ms. Zee. I saw Ms. Brown. I saw Mr. Norris, and I saw Ms. Timmons. And then after that, I'm going to ask that we make a decision to table or vote so that we don't spend our whole evening on this one matter. Okay? Okay. You're on mute again, Ms. Zee. Oh, my goodness. Okay. I'm going to skip you, Ms. Zee, for a moment and come back.
Just give her a sec.
Wish I could unmute you. Like, we cannot hear you, Ms. Zee. She's going to get help. So, Ms. Brown?
I want to hear what Mr. Norris has to say first.
Okay. Mr. Norris?
Thank you. I'm just, just a little confused on our hesitancy to just table this to get more information. Because from what I was hearing, the grading system really isn't going to change. It's only going to change at the end of the year when you determine what's on the report card. It's just pass or fail at the middle school level. So just regardless of whether to go to pass or fail or not, I think that waiting to get some more information might be a good decision, and also I don't think it would necessarily hurt students in the fact that they're going to get graded the same way throughout the semester. The only difference is just going to occur at the end of the semester. So ideally, students are going to still be pushing for the same grades and pushing for the same quality of work that they would be if they were going to pass fail immediately.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Ms. Brown? Oh, no, Ms. Zee is back. Yay.
Thank you. I'm so sorry. I can't, part of the problem is, just as a way of an apology, is that I am blind in one eye, so I can't see the keys. So it really makes it hard on me if my feeling doesn't tell me exactly the right key. I'm lost. Thank you so much. I have, I'll try to make my points quick. One of the points that was, you can't hear me again? Can you, can you hear me?
I can hear you, and I wanted to ask, I wanted to ask you to stay on. Don't turn the microphone off.
Oh, I thought you said last time to turn it off. Oh, you probably didn't.
Just keep yourself on. That way we can always hear you when we need to.
Okay. Anyway, the first point is, it was pointed out to me this week that New Hampshire is not the only state that's in this pandemic. And so colleges, when colleges are looking at report cards or they're, you know, at these letter grades, they're going to see that in this quarter was pandemic, and they're going to come to recognize when they're seeing that pandemic. When a student goes from an A plus to a fail, they're going to know. They're going to say, oh, that's that pandemic stuff, and they're not going to pay attention to it. So I think that, that, to think that that's a problem, I think, I didn't catch on until somebody else told me that. The second thing is, to going to Mrs. Fitzpatrick's point, the numbers she's talking about, and if I'm calculating correctly, I think we have like eight hundred, I think we have two thousand students in middle school. That means that two thousand kids have to know where that fail grade is, and I guarantee you that if you change it, that two thousand that know right now is going to go to about fifty, because they don't pay attention. They're kids. I mean, they're middle-aged kids, but they still, they haven't reached their maximum potential, that's for sure. So I think the numbers are much, much more important than we're emphasizing here. To get all two thousand of them on the same page again, I think those middle school teachers, as usual, I think our teachers are right on target because they're right on top of the problem. They live with it day in and day out. And I do think time is critical. I would like us to vote now because I think they need to know the uncertainty is another anxiety that I don't think I want to leave with our students or our teachers, so I would like to get it resolved. And unfortunately, with this pandemic, sometimes as board members, we feel left out because, because we can't look at each other. It's not the same. And so, and we're not having as many meetings. And so you do, you do start to feel that you've lost your place and the message, if you will, but but I think that we have to, we just have to bear with the times and tell ourselves this is going to be over, hopefully by, by good weather. And so, and I guess my final comment is that I will be supporting this because I'm going to support the teachers, because I have to tell you, after all is said and done, they, they give so much and they care so much, and they do such a great job, and they know better than I do, so I'm following their lead. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zee. Ms. Brown, and then Ms. Timmons.
Oh, um, I've got to admit, I'm a little bit conflicted on this, but to speak to, I really was happy to hear Mr. Gao's perspective because he was the group of kids that I was really concerned about. We had a teacher email us this week, and he, it was, it was a great email, and they were talking about his middle school teacher. And one of the things they're supposed to report on, I'm going to quote him in here, is the characteristics in the report cards or characteristics of the successful learner. And they include the categories of respect, perseverance and responsibility. And he said, by embracing a pass fail grading system, you're not really giving a chance to breach two out of three of these categories. And I, and I kind of was in agreement with that. And then I heard Mr. Gao speak, and then I thought, you know, they're actually giving them an opportunity to embrace learning for learning's sake. And learning and really, for the love of learning and do your best because like the intrinsic value of education. So I think those are both good points. And that's why I'm sitting here a little bit on the fence. To what Mr. Norris was saying, I think the reason we'd want to make a decision sooner than later would be that the pass fail option does not simply wait till the end and we see if you have a D minus or higher. It means that we're going to still hold you accountable using your traditional grading scale through the rest of the semester. But those people who are on the lower end, you're going to motivate them before they might be thinking, there's no way I can pass this. There's no way I can trudge through this work. So I'm just going to give up. Those people that are bordering between that C, D, F station, those people are the people that are going to benefit a lot from this system. The high flyers are still going to do great. The low people might get pulled up. My fear is for the kids that are in the middle, who are are the middle high kids, the kids that are going to pass no matter what. They're probably maybe like a B student. Are they going to push themselves that extra distance to get what they could earn in a regular classroom, which would be an A? Or are they going to do just enough to get by? And quite honestly, I don't know. My best option is to go with the middle school teachers who have been represented in the survey we took. I'd be okay if we decide to table this tonight to do some further talks, but I don't think or I think we should just take it off the table, cancel it, vote no, make, but do the vote tonight and not just leave an extra thing hanging over these kids' heads, because they've got a lot of stuff hanging over their heads. When's the school year going to end? When are we going to see our friends again? When are we going to get to see our grandmother? I don't know. Whatever there's things are going on in these kids' lives. But I think stretching out these votes longer and longer and like floating the rumor, oh, in two weeks, we'll know if this is going to be your grading system or not. I don't know if it's in the kids' best interest.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Ms. Timmons?
Thank you, Madam President. I do agree with Ms. Brown, and also I agree with Ms. Johnson. She's right. We, we only measure pass fail, not the rubric, and we should be able to see the criteria. We should. However, having said that, we don't have a lot of time. We just don't. And so we have to make a decision whether we're going to, like Ms. Zee said, go ahead and pass something. Now, we need to support the teachers, and we also need to support the children. So right now, I'm conflicted myself because we did have this conversation at our last meeting with Ms. Brown, so whatever best for our faculty, teachers and the students is the way we should go.
Thank you.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you, Ms. Timmons.
Ms. Raymond, I'm sorry, I couldn't get my hand up. I don't have my picture there. But can I just add, we, we don't have another meeting this week. We have next Monday and Tuesday. I don't, I don't think we have to wait two, three, four weeks for this decision. I think we could table it. I think we should be able to see a copy of the rubric, let our teachers see a copy of the rubric to make sure everybody's on the same page. That's all I'm asking is for as much collaboration as we can get, and I would like as much collaboration from the teachers. If they have a rubric that's different from what they're using now, they ought to be able to see that before they can accept that or make a decision on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Wait, wait. I just want to say something. And what I want to say is, a lot of this type of discussion needs to be done in committee. So we're kind of reinventing the wheel here with this discussion. The committee went over almost all of this and still made a recommendation to the board to pass it. We ought to be asking new questions, not old questions. Having said that, I tend to agree with those who have suggested that we go ahead and vote. I don't think it's fair to the teachers. I don't think it's fair to anyone to ask them to do more work on this if it's not going to pass, right? The teachers have enough on their plate. We don't need to be constantly going back to them and asking them to do more and more on the chance that we might approve it. So, you know, it's my recommendation that we go ahead and go for the vote now.
Ms. Raymond, can I just put one more thing in?
Quickly, Ms. Fitzpatrick.
I just wanted to let you know that the rubric was shared with the teachers today, and none of my principals got any emails back, and I didn't get any emails back from teachers either totally against it or totally for it. I didn't, it was crickets.
Okay. Okay. So at this point, we need to either, go ahead, Ms. Brown.
Apologize for the interruption. Is, Ms. Fitzpatrick, you have those numbers that we used that was our big selling point before when we made the recommendation from that survey you did with the middle school teachers?
Yes, I can get you those numbers. I'll just send it to the board.
Okay, I think Ms. Brown was asking if anyone had it offhand. So, okay.
I'm sorry. I should have had it written down here. I didn't think of it until now.
Okay, sorry. I was just looking to see if I had it easily accessible, and I do not.
I'm sorry. I have it. Do you want the numbers? Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, please, Ms. Patrick.
Okay. Elm Street, out of ninety-nine teachers, eighty-one responded, seventy-four point one in favor, twenty-five point nine against. Fairgrounds, there was thirty-nine responses out of fifty-seven teachers, fifty-four percent in favor, forty-six percent against. And at Penachuk, forty-five responses out of fifty-five teachers, eighty percent in favor, twenty percent against.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fitzpatrick. I appreciate that. Okay. I don't see any other hands. I don't hear any beeps. So, Mr. Guarino, since we did not get a motion, any other motions, let's go ahead and vote on the motion before us.
Okay. Motion is to
Yeah, he's repeating.
Yeah, thank you.
Motion is to approve pass fail for middle schools for the third trimester. On the motion, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Zee?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
No.
Ms. Timmons? Ms. Timmons? Okay, I have two noes and seven yeses. The motion carries seven to two.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Guarino. Ms. Brown, did you have anything else from curriculum for us this evening?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Committee on Human Resources, Ms. Timmons and Ms. O'Gara, I understand you have something for us tonight. We went ahead and forewent the committee on HR basically for time. Go ahead, Ms. Timmons.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Ms. O'Gara, do you have anything for us other than a personal recommendation?
No. Personal recommendation, one thing on it.
Okay, thank you. So, Ms. Timmons, do you have a motion to make regarding that one personnel recommend?
Yes, I moved to approve that one personal recommendation dated April the thirteenth, two thousand, I mean, twenty twenty. In a second.
Okay, I'll second that. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Mr. Guarino, could you call the roll on the motion to approve tonight's personnel recommendation?
On the motion, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Zee?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden? Ms. Oden? Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Oden, did you say yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. Motion carries nine to zero.
All right. Any other personnel items other than are non-public for later?
No, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Timmons. Do we have any liaison reports this month?
No, we don't. Not from the student representative.
Okay, great. So the next item is unfinished business. The first unfinished business item we have this evening is the question of April vacation. I know there's been much discussion about this online. I personally received over two hundred emails, so if you haven't gotten a response to me, I'm getting through them all. I did read them all and make little tally marks about how many were for and how many were against, but I did not have an opportunity to write a personal response to every single one who emailed me. So at this point, does anyone have a motion they would like to make regarding April vacation? Ms. Zee?
I would like to go, I think that the, what was mentioned earlier about going to the split week was a good one. As I recall, it was two days that we would, we would take two days of vacation so that they have a four-day weekend.
Okay.
So that's a motion that I would like to make. If you want to put it in exact words, I appreciate it.
So I'm going to make sure I've got this correct. Your motion is to abbreviate April vacation so that we have three days of instruction and two days off for a long weekend.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I, I have a question for that?
Well, first we need a second, and then you can ask your question. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Purpose of discussion.
Okay. Ms. Oden seconded it first. Ms. Zee, did you wish to speak to your motion?
She can go ahead.
Okay. So Ms. Gilio had her hand up, and then Ms. Bishop, and then Ms. Oden, where are you next?
I can go next, after them.
I'm just concerned that I haven't actually seen the survey results. Maybe I missed an email. I know that the survey didn't run very well the first time around, and I know that the district put a lot of effort into finding out how people were feeling about it. And so I just wonder if someone can review what the results of the survey were. Thank you.
Mosley?
I can do that, certainly. Just, my internet went down for a sec, so just bear with me a little bit. I'm on my laptop a little bit.
Is that in the information that you?
It was in the board package, but I'd be certainly like to kind of review that.
Hold on one second. I have printed everything in. Oh, I have it.
On the first page.
Yep, I have it. So, the total results from both April 3rd and April 9th were 500, no, 5,921 in favor of eliminating vacation and 1,683 in favor of keeping vacation. Is that, does anyone have anything different?
I think you would, good, and then I can start a little bit.
No, I have nothing else.
All right. You know, partly is that I think what happened is that, just to give the context of this, number one, I know there's been some discussion around that. We don't, partly what we looked at is that we tried to avoid replication. We created this little poll. There were some glitches to it, we must acknowledge that. But at the same time, we're able to reach out and get to those people. So, you know, certainly, we heard from over quite a bit of people from the community. Nearly 6,000 of the respondents agreed to eliminate April break and continue learning at home that week and establish June 12th as the last day of school. Again, I just want to thank everyone for the time for using the survey, the poll, excuse me, who registered for it. We appreciate hearing from the individuals that responded to the survey. And, you know, certainly, this is a decision for the board to engage in. To Ms. Zine's point, it doesn't, and to everyone's point here, I don't think if, whatever the decision is, whether to eliminate it, you're going to have people who are very unhappy. If you keep break, you're going to have people who are unhappy who said to eliminate. I think my strong recommendation would be to do a King Solomon here, so to speak. Have that Monday and Tuesday for remote learning, and then give the teachers and the staff a little bit of break and have that Wednesday, Thursday, Friday into Saturday, Sunday, which goes up to about five days, where they can catch their breath with their families, just take a break from being behind the desk. Hopefully, it's a better day outside for them, and maybe they can just take some time for their loved ones, too. But I think it's a great suggestion.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. Ms. Gilio, where did Ms. Gilio go? Oh, there you are. Ms. Gilio, did you have anything else?
No, but I agree with Dr. Mosley. That was a relation that came through one of the many emails I got. And it seems to me that it would give those people who really feel like they need a break, but it would also satisfy the people who don't want it the whole vacation week. And even though the results of the survey or the poll would make me vote differently, I would really appreciate us considering a motion to have a partial vacation.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gilio. And so just to remind everyone, Ms. Zine's motion was to have three days of instruction and two days off. So, I have Ms. Bishop next, then Ms. Oden, then Ms. Johnson.
If we voted for this and we took the two days off, would that change our June 12th end date? Would we be pushing it out? Would we make those student and teacher days? Would they?
I'll get.
Jen, we just lost you, but I think the question was, what is the last day of school now? And how would changing vacation affect the last day of school?
I have the last day of school at June 19th.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, my computer froze for that whole thing. What did you say after I finished talking?
So, we lost you. Dr. Mosley said the last day of school currently is June 19th.
Which is a Friday.
Which is a Friday. If we were to take as many days off of vacation, we could theoretically get out that many days early.
So, instead of it being June 12th, which is a Friday, it would be like the 16th?
Yes, if we took five, it's 19 now, we took five days, if we got rid of the vacation entirely, it would go to the 12th. If we took three, three days, as Ms. Zine has proposed in her motion, it would be 19 minus three, the 16th, the Tuesday.
What I'm asking is, does it have to be student and teacher days, or couldn't it just be teacher days?
No, it cannot be just teacher days. The union contract doesn't allow for it. I see you, Ms. Brown. I will add you to the list. You are after Ms. Johnson. Great, does that answer your question, Ms. Bishop?
Um, I guess.
Okay. Ms. Oden, Ms. Johnson, and then Ms. Brown.
Yes, could I clarify? I thought Ms. Zine had recommended two days and not three days before the weekend. Ms. Zine, can you clarify?
Thank you, Mrs. Oden. Yes, that's what I recommended, but I have no problem if you want to change it to three. Dr. Mosley seemed to think three was better. You know, I just, the conversations I had this week with the teachers was very heartrending, truthfully. They expressed their anxiety, their overload, their not being able to put their children, their own children, to the side so that they could deal with all of the children they had to deal with in homeschooling. And I have a daughter who actually expressed that to me, and it broke my heart. She said, "I feel like I'm putting my own children in the closet so that I can take care of all of these other kids." So I thought, to give them a break, I would be in favor of that. And when he said compromise, I'm always in favor of compromise, so, but whichever. If you want to make an amendment, I'm with it. If you don't, that's fine, too. Thank you.
Okay, so, just to, I'm confused, because I repeated Ms. Zine's motion twice after she had said what she wanted. And I really thought it was three on and two off, but.
It was.
Three on and two off, okay.
Yes.
And so, now, Ms. Brown has reminded me in a point of order that at our last meeting, she had made a motion to eliminate school vacation, which we tabled. And not being an expert parliamentaryian, I'm confused as to whether we need to consider Ms. Brown's motion and vote on it before we're allowed to have Ms. Zine's motion. Mr. Guarino?
Yes, Ms. Brown's motion was made at the committee level?
No. No, she was, it was made at our last main board meeting.
At our last main board meeting. I don't think we need to untable it since it's a different motion because her motion was to, her motion was to eliminate entirety, and this is an entirely different motion. So that's still on the table. This is, this, what we have in front of us, the business we have in front of us is Ms. Zine's motion.
All right, so, to make sure that we are operating correctly, we would, we would need to, in order to consider Ms. Brown's motion, someone would have, we'd have to vote to take it off the table and put it back on the floor.
Right, and but first, currently, we have Ms. Zine's motion right now on the floor. So we'd have to take care of that piece of business first, vote it yes or no. And then, if we vote it yes, then her tabled motion becomes, and if we vote no, then we can consider her, take it off the table.
Okay, and I would just like to remind people that if you have a point of order, you know, like a point of order such as this, where it's a question of parliamentary rules, please just say point of order and interrupt us because I don't want to miss that. So, going back, Ms. Oden was speaking to desire for the flip of what Ms. Zine's motion was. And then Ms. Johnson had her hand up, and then Ms. Brown had her hand up. So, Ms. Oden, have you completed your comments?
Well, I just want to say, I think whether you wanted to eliminate vacation or to have the, have the vacation, I think there's a win-win here. Everybody gets a little bit of something. And I think in fairness, some of the comments I got in the emails from those teachers that need that break, they were so heartfelt and so sincere. So, I just think it's a good compromise, not ideal. But again, I'm going to say, I wish we had taken the time and not rushed about this and had that as part of the survey. So, that's where I'm standing on this. I think this is a good compromise. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Oden. Next, I have written down Ms. Johnson and then Ms. Brown.
Okay, first of all, some of the emails we got, it was a little troubling here because one of them said, for example, some people were able to vote multiple times, while others, like myself, were not able to vote at all. I don't know if we had the multiple times, which I was a little concerned. Another email said, "To me, this is a selfish argument and someone trying to get something out of this situation." Well, look, I'm not trying to get anything out of a situation. I don't think anybody else on the board is. I mean, we're not Washington, DC. And then they said, "This has been deeply troubling to see members of the community lobby." I haven't been lobbied. I don't know about anybody else, but we're going to lobby over vacation time for people to support canceling April vacation just to get summer more quickly. This had nothing to do with summer more quickly. We knew that, and when we started the remote learning, the students had a week off prior to. And we sent out this survey, that, yes, it was a little bit rushed. I was not happy that it went by phone and it didn't go by email like we had originally planned, and there were some glitches in it. And I see the numbers, and I've been sitting around, you know, well, I have nothing a lot to do during the days now. But, you know, if we send out these surveys and we get these answers, and a lot, and the overwhelming support was for April vacation, so if we decide, okay, we're not going to go by what people voted for, what was the point of having the survey and all this craziness and the glitches in the system? We've had, you know, and I did the numbers, and some of them don't add up, and I'm kind of concerned about opt-out people. How do they get information? Bad phone numbers, deactivated, you know? So, there's a lot of stuff that we learnt, I think, from this survey, where we have to go back and clean up some of these numbers and make sure that we have parents or guardians that we can get in touch with. If we've had to compromise here, because overwhelming support was to give up April vacation because a lot of the parents and also teachers who answered the survey said that they're in a routine now and they want to keep the momentum going, I'd be willing to give up one day, either a Monday or a Friday, and give them four days because I want to keep that momentum going because for some, a kid, like we were talking about pass failing, to a kid that's passing and is staying right on grade, giving up a day or two might not be anything. A kid that's struggling more, a student, that one or two days can mean a lot in his learning or her learning process. So, I mean, let's think about this before we say, oh, give up two days, or give up three days. We did a survey, and we made it fair because it was myself and Ms. Brown who said, "Let's cancel vacation at the beginning," and everybody wanted the survey, and now we did the survey, and now we're not going to pay attention to the survey that the administration and Dr. Mosley put in a lot of time and effort, even though there were glitches in it. And now we're just going to throw the survey out the window. What's the point of doing any of this? We're wasting our time. We said it at the last meeting. We got it done within a reasonable amount of time. Let's make the decision on this. This is the way it came out. One day I'm willing to forego, not two days, according to the survey. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Next, I have written down Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Madam President. I actually was going to echo to start. I have about three points here that first was to echo what Ms. Johnson said. We had glitches in the survey system, but we decided we are going to go with it because we want to know what families and what teachers wanted to say. We've got basically a ratio in the 5,000s to 1,000. Even if you give up, let's say there's a margin of error of 1,000 people, it's still overwhelming in favor of getting rid of spring break. And additionally, if, we all got the same emails. We were all copied on all of those emails that came in. I will say there were some very impassioned emails about, from the parents who really, or parents and teachers who really felt they needed a break. But even in the emails that we got, by the straight-up numbers, you all, the board members, have to agree that even those came in much more in favor of canceling spring break. The, just, the numbers are just there in favor of canceling, and if we're going to go with what the people want, that's what the people want. I agree with Paula Johnson. I would concede one day as a, as like a three-day weekend. That seems like a reasonable request. Or maybe if you were going to go two days, I would do a Monday and a Friday. I think that going a, two days in the same week, because at least then you have four weeks, four days of consistent learning. I think that would be a better option. And all of that goes back to my original argument in favor of canceling spring break, which is to keep the people who are, need those connections through the district, those kids that are, their only connection to the outside world is the computer screen that they're looking for, the district's provided, the teacher that they're seeing once a day or a few times a week, and something that's keeping them engaged and keeping them moving along. The, and also, you think about when we cancel spring break, we're also canceling the food service workers that are working that week. So, that means they're not getting paid, but it also means the kids, the 8,000 meals that we're giving out each day are not getting fed. I know there's been some thoughts that, and 68 hours of hunger would take care of those kids, and they will do their best to take care of it, but that's, that is an outside organization, charity, by the United Way. We cannot expect them to make up that difference. And right now, all through the state, 17 million people in the country without jobs right now who are normally employed, the drain on food banks is so much higher than it usually is. If we, as a school district, can keep connections with those kids every day on a personal level and on a physical level, I think that's really important for the consistency. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. I forgot to ask, I have Ms. Bishop next, but I forgot to ask both you, Ms. Johnson, and now you. You both made recommendations. Were you intending for those to be an amendment to the motion on the table? Ms. Brown?
I still would prefer to cancel all of spring break, but I will vote no on a two-day cancellation. If someone wants to amend it to a one-day, a one-day vacation, I will maybe be amiable to it.
Okay. All right, Ms. Bishop?
Can you hear me now? Okay, hopefully you can hear me. This is getting really aggravating. What I wanted to point out also is, we just voted to do pass fail with the middle schoolers, which hopefully has reduced a great amount of stress for teachers and students. If we reduce their workload, reduce the stress about getting the grades that they need to get, and we give them school vacation, I feel like we're doing a lot to accommodate stressors, maybe even going above and beyond it. I like the idea of two days off, the Thursday, Friday off, and three days on. However, I almost want to see what we do with the high school in regards to their pass fail before we commit to canceling the whole April vacation because I am thinking about this in regards to the middle schoolers. But I would love to hear what our student representatives feel about their vacation time as well.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Did anyone else have something to say on Ms. Zine's motion? Mr. Norris?
I'd just say, from my perspective, I think regardless of whether we go to pass fail or stay with our current grading system, I think that it doesn't really. I think that it doesn't really affect whether or not we go to vacation or not. I think you can never kind of take away the stress enough for kids going, especially going through a pandemic now. But I personally am for just going back to school full-time for the April break. And I think one day, one or two days would be a good compromise. But I think that going, taking the whole break off would not be a good decision.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Ms. Dean?
I just wanted to add that when you think about a survey for 11,000 families, that's a huge number. And we haven't done, in the 13 years that I've been involved with the board, we have never done a survey of that magnitude that I remember. And so people, their information changes and they don't bother to remember to call everybody and change that information. So that there were some hang-ups, I think, were to be expected. I mean, I think that it probably improved our numbers dramatically. And now we could contact more people effectively because of it. So there was a good thing that came from that, I believe. And I also believe the staff did a wonderful job. Because if you think about it, they actually got 8,000, it was over 8,000, if I'm hearing correctly, of people who responded out of 11,000. That's almost unheard of. So I would like to commend staff and I would like to say, you know, that they did a pretty good job. Because I just don't want them to think that all we do is sit and tear them apart, because they've really, I feel like they've been carrying a load that I wouldn't want to carry and couldn't carry. So I just didn't want to let that go. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. Dr. Mosley, did you have your hand?
I did. There's one variable that's missing here, and maybe it was covered. So there's a couple of things. Understand that, yes, the kids had that week off, but understand the faculty were still working that week, preparing for the remote learning. So there's a sense that, I don't want, you know, the public to think that the faculty also, they were coming in. Not only that, they were also grabbing their materials and preparing for the online experience.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. That's an excellent point. I think it's important for everyone to know that our faculty and staff took a classroom-based curriculum and rewrote it to be appropriate for online learning over that week, which is a tremendous undertaking. So I'd just like to say myself that I'm a, I have a social work background. I tend to want to move towards compromise. I got a vast number of emails. They were, it wasn't even close. The people who took the time to email the board or email me directly or call me or text me by far, by far, requested to cancel vacation altogether. Having said that, again, I'm like a compromiser. So I'm in support of Ms. Dean's motion over canceling it altogether. Just in the spirit of wanting to do some outreach for those people who did want a break. Let's go around one more time. I'd like to limit people so they're not speaking more than two times on the same issue. So Ms. Brown, then Ms. Johnson, I don't see anybody else waving at me. Oh, Ms. Dean, I'm sorry. Ms. Brown, Ms. Johnson, and then Ms. Dean.
Can I move to modify the motion to include one day? And I'd like to make it Friday, Friday, April. I guess, I'm sorry, Friday, or let's say, no, actually. I don't know. What do you guys want, a Monday or Friday? But one or the other.
All right.
Either Monday or Friday. Actually, April, Monday, April 27th. I moved that the day we cancel, I would like to motion, I moved to modify the motion, make a one-day break option to be Monday, April 27th. Cancel the rest of April vacation.
Okay, so your motion is to amend the motion that we currently have on the floor to make 4/27 a no-school day and have school the remaining four days.
Correct.
Okay.
May I also, I'm sorry.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Ms. Gilio was seconding it?
And may I speak to it for one other, mention one item about that?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that right now, if we were to cancel all, I want to make sure everybody knows this. If we cancel all of spring break, we end on a traditional Friday. However, if we go ahead and do it, we're going to have to have, we will have a week of school. We're going to come, have a weekend off and we have to come back and have one more day of school. Which, if you've ever taught in a classroom, is not super fun. So there you have that, for the record. It might be better for the teachers just to cancel it and end on a Friday. Ms. Gilio, maybe you know what I'm talking about. But, and actually, I don't know. And I will say, and I don't know, it doesn't matter to me if it's Monday or Friday, whatever you guys want, but one day off.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Brown, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Dean. And then Ms. Bagley has something to add regarding special education.
Thank you. I don't mind compromising, but, you know, we did this survey. 7,604 people, if I've got my numbers right, from the two surveys that were combined here with Dr. Mosley's figures, from Stacy Hines, Dr. Mosley. I mean, that was a lot of work that they put in to get all these numbers. For 7,600 people plus emails that we got and the majority of them. So if you take the 7,600, I don't know if those emails are included in them or not, but it doesn't matter. The majority of it was to cancel the vacation. So I don't want to belabor this. In the act of compromise, I'll do one day. My opinion would be a Friday, so they start like usual on a Monday. Like Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, like they're going back to school normally and maybe May 1st. But, I mean, if we're going to do surveys and the overwhelming majority tells us what we've asked one way or the other, if the overwhelming majority was to cancel it, we would have done it. But why are we wasting precious time of our administrators where we're edifying them and saying how great they're doing and they are doing great? But this is time-consuming, that they could have been doing a different project if we weren't going to listen to this. So I'm not very happy with this. We talked about this. I remember the last full board meeting, it was a 40-minute discussion, because it was mentioned that we did a 40-minute discussion on it. So now what are we doing? Another 40-minute discussion on something that we got the answers on, only to change what the answers are? Because some people don't want five days a week for these kids that are already in a routine. Some of these kids, especially kids with learning disabilities, ADD, ADHD, they have to have routines and structures. And when you change this on some kids, it's like starting all over again. So I'm up in the, are the compromise, I'll do the one day. If you want to do Monday, it's fine. If you want to do Friday, doesn't matter to me. But I want to keep a routine for these students and that's what the parents also wanted. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Dean, and then again, Ms. Bagley has some information regarding your special education comment.
I'm just going to make mine quick. One of the things that I forgot to say before was, the survey also, I don't think I said this last time. The survey also accomplished another thing, in my view. It said to all of our constituents, whether they're teachers or parents or grandparents, that we care about what they think and that we're listening and that we're trying to do the best we can under unorthodox pandemic mess. So just wanted to throw that in there. And I think that, again, I go to the teachers. I care about the parents, but the teachers have been under an awful lot of stress. And so I would like to see them get two days. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. Ms. Bagley?
Hi, thank you. So I just wanted to share that if we do skip April vacation completely, that means that school will end June 12th, which will mean an even longer break for our students who require extended school year services, which could potentially end up in more regression of skills. So I, coming from a special education perspective, that is a concern of mine. That's about four weeks between the end of the school year and the beginning of extended school year services. At this point, we may even have to look at increasing our extended school year, given that our students have been out of school for this long. They are participating as much as possible, but not all of our students are able to.
Thank you, Ms. Bagley. Okay, can I request a amendment to, both the amendment and the motion on the table, on the floor? And that is, the language of both motions indicate that the, that the motion is due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Does anyone have an objection to that?
I will accept your friendly motion.
Okay, thank you. That way, I don't want to go through a whole voting on it if there are no objections. And I don't see any objections. So Mr. Guarino, could you please note that on both, I'd like some language in there stating that this motion is due to the COVID-19 pandemic? Okay, so I don't see any other hands. No one else is making noise in my ear. So Mr. Guarino, could you please take the role on the amendment by Ms. Brown and seconded by Ms. Gilio, which was to amend the motion to make 4/27 a no-school day and have school the other four days? I think I mangled the language.
Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, okay. On the amendment, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
No.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
I have two noes and seven yeses. The yeses have it. The amendment passes.
So what this means is that the original motion has now been amended to state that regarding the week of April vacation, the motion is to make 4/27 a no-school day and have school the other four days due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We do need to vote again, because we have just reworded the original motion. I know that is weird, but that's how we're going to do it. All right, so Mr. Guarino?
Okay, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you very much, Mr. Guarino. Okay, the next item.
Excuse me, can I ask, just a moment? Before we leave this, can anybody tell me why we did a telephone interview? There were just so many glitches with this. People didn't get called. They didn't get called the second time. They got called the first time and then they got called the first time. The second time we had the survey. Can anybody tell me why we did a telephone survey and what the problem was?
Would you like to speak to that or I can, kind of talk about it a little bit?
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. Yes, yes. It was at the April 30th board meeting, as you all know so well, that it was decided we needed to survey families and staff about April vacation. And the suggestion was it needed to be a quick turnaround so you could make a decision tonight. And it was, we were a very specific targeted population, families and staff. Again, the short turnaround time. The measurement of the polling was specific. There were really no variables. It was, as was determined, basically a yes or no question. Blackboard Connect compiled the data automatically, very quickly, which worked with our timetable. The cost was negligible. The phone poll is a function of the Blackboard Connect mass communication software we already have. Blackboard Connect is the service Dr. Mosley uses to notify families and staff about snow days and delayed openings. So there was no added cost for the poll. As far as, you know, why there was some cutout that some of the recipients talked about is Blackboard Connect explained to me that there is noise detection software that's highly sensitive that's on top of the polling software. It's there because it's looking for that sound to indicate that it should leave a voice message. So in answering the phone, it may have heard a sound that triggered leaving the voicemail message. And there were technical difficulties, as somebody mentioned earlier, with the devices. You know, we have quite a few people who have opted out of these phone messages. We have some that were deactivated. So the end result, though, which it was exactly what we had hoped, we ended up with a very strong sample size and we had 52% respond, which is, I think, the most successful survey we've ever conducted in the school district that I'm aware of. So I think it had accomplished giving you a strong sample. You know, measuring what was a simple yes or no, basically yes or no question.
Well, I understand about the sound, but we had people write us and say, I took the survey and then I got a second call to take it again. So I think there were other issues with it. I guess for me, I would have thought we would have done a, maybe a survey monkey. Was there any reason why we didn't use a survey monkey?
Because we don't, we don't have survey monkey.
District doesn't have that software.
Doesn't.
Just schools? Do schools have it individually?
No, the district doesn't have that survey software.
The person that did that is no longer here and we don't have to do that. The other thing that came of the last board meeting was that, I said, we tried. I mean, we tried to do it, so there was some concern around people, you know, basically stuffing the ballot boxes. And this was one way that we attempted to eliminate that.
I understand that.
And we tried to get it back in a timely manner. So the way that we thought. We just don't have the staff or the software to sit down and do a survey monkey like that. We also, you know, tried to do the best we can under the circumstances.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is grading for the high school for quarter four. We've had quite a bit of discussion about this already. Before we entertain any motions, I'd like to know if Dr. Mosley, Mr. Richard, or, excuse me, I'm sorry. I don't see Mr. Burns here anymore. Oh, there he is. Your name disappeared and your face arrived. So if Dr. Mosley, Mr. Richard, or Mr. Burns have any information that hasn't already been shared with us.
Can I ask the board just a request? If there are some directors that I can let go, can I do that right now? I'd like to just say, Stacy, if you have any other questions around the survey, well, we already closed out that item. So I'm just going to ask some directors if they can just kind of sign off and I can do that. Stacy, you're all set. You can leave if you like. And Mr. Chopa, you're all set too.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, yes, I think that's fine. I do, Dr. Mosley, I do have a question. Maybe not a question, but we do have the collaborative letter to the New Hampshire DOE a little bit later on the agenda. Are you able to answer questions if those arise? Or Ms. Bagley, she's still here?
Yeah, Ms. Bagley's still here.
Okay, great. Thank you for your patience and making sure I have people.
Okay.
Okay.
I will turn this over to, you know, Nate Burns and I will turn this over to, you know, Nate Burns, and thank you for your time, Mr. Burns, and Mr. Richards. And I'm looking here, I'm trying to find, I don't see Donna.
I'm here.
Okay, there is.
Ms. Patrick is here, too.
So, again, trying to get consensus. This is an interesting dilemma we have here between our two high schools. So I'll leave you with that teaser, and I'll turn it over to Keith, Nate, and Donna.
All right, I was gonna kick off here, and then I'll hand on to Nate. So I believe it was last Wednesday night, the curriculum evaluation committee discussion came up around pass/fail for high school, on what that would look like. And I believe the ask was, the task for was to get feedback from our staffs. So Thursday, working with Nate and Donna, we created a quick survey, pretty much two questions, pretty much asking, would you, are you in favor of moving to a pass/fail system or keeping the status quo? And then our second question on that survey is, how would you determine passing? What would that be? And we had a few options, and then we also had an option for staff to add in other. On that survey, we had about, we had 240 respondents. That's about 80%, if you're looking at both staffs responding. And it came back real clear, 50/50. I think you guys got the charts tonight. It was about 50.4% to stay status quo and 49.6% to change to a pass/fail. Knowing that survey is just one mode of communication, Nate and I both held virtual staff meetings on Friday as well. I'll speak to the South meeting. At the South meeting, we had 45 staff members attend. Mrs. Patrick was there as well to hear the conversation. At that conversation, we went one by one, and I solicited information from the staff members who were present. They wanted to share their thoughts. And during that meeting, it was an overwhelming majority of the people that were there from the South staff, that they would like to move to a pass/audit/fail system. We started to kind of look at a, the option of audit started to come in, and there was discussion about what that would be. And for people that didn't want to maybe join the meeting or just couldn't at that time, Nate and I also said, please feel free to send us your, an email with your thoughts. We compiled that into a Google document. And again, those com, those comments were right along the same lines, 50/50, in favor of and favor against. I'll be honest, listening to Josh and Stephen start off tonight, they really laid out the conversations on either side of this argument very well. Couple of quick themes from my meeting, and then I'll kick it over to Nate. Some of the pros with moving to a pass/fail and things that have already been discussed tonight, so I won't re-airy too much or spend too much time. Equity issues. The great equalizer is supposed to be education. Kids come to our buildings, and we put qualified staff in front of them. They're at home now, doing the best they can. And we know that our students are in different situations and different environments from house to house. Social-emotional learning came up quite a bit. A lot of our students might not be focusing on academics. There's a lot going on in the world at this time, with unemployment increasing, parents that are sick, maybe they are affected by the COVID-19 virus, and maybe academics is not on the forefront. The authenticity of the work, you know, you're not there, you're not seeing what's handed in. There's been some question or concern about, you know, seeing a student's progress, and all of a sudden, you know, for one reason or another, things might be a little bit better than it was before. So authenticity of work has come up. And just concerns about, you know, students moving on to the next level for next year. We have many of our courses are sequential. You need to do well in Algebra I to move on to General Algebra II. You have to do well in French I to be prepared for French II. And there's several courses that fall in line with that. But again, I think most of it was really around the mindset of our students wanting to do the best. We didn't want anybody being punished because of something that's out of their control. Some of the cons that came up, some people were concerned about disengagement. If we move to a pass/fail system, would students now kind of let off the gas pedal a little bit? What does it mean for GPA and class rank? And we don't have, working with Nate, Lori Kootu, Donna, and Jackie Hackett, the directors of guidance, we don't have all the answers for that. I'll just be honest. What does that mean? There is a board policy that for a full-time student, after, you know, four semesters, junior year, you get a GPA and a class rank. What does that mean in a pass/fail world, pass/fail audit world? Some inequities. Not everybody teaches the same courses, the same length of courses. We have full-year courses. Kids have been in class since September, you know, end of August. They've been in that class for three quarters of our school year almost. We have quarter classes. We'll have some quarter classes where the students will never sit face-to-face with their teacher. We have semester courses where they are with their teacher for just under half the time. What does that look like? Some of our running start programs that we are working with the colleges, they have to, we've been told that they need to come up with a letter grade. So some of the teachers had said that if I have to convert that to a letter grade for those, those students, I could probably do it for all of my students. And also for some of our area students in a CTE course, if some of our neighboring schools aren't going to a pass/fail system, I think the, you know, the expectation would be that a letter grade is created. So I'm sorry, I'm not bringing any clarity to this discussion. Our staff during the meeting was certainly more overwhelming in support of a pass/fail system. But again, the survey was about 50/50. And through the emails, I've seen, pretty much could have categorized them into three parts. One was in favor, one was against, and one was, I'd almost categorize as questions, what ifs. And I don't think I have all the answers to those right now. I'll kick it off to Nate.
Thanks. So much like Keith, we hosted a faculty meeting right after his on Friday afternoon. Had about 40, 43 teachers attended that meeting, or 43 staff members. Unlike Keith's meeting, the vast majority of mine were in favor of keeping the grading system as we currently have. Basically, and they also said the same thing, you know, a lot of it came down to that social-emotional piece. But their thought was that by making a change to pass/fail, you're adding another stress to the teachers as far as how are they going to determine what's a pass/fail? And same with students. They're used to a certain grading scale and grading system right now. So, you know, trying to make that shift, it makes things a little bit more difficult for them, too, to kind of understand what, what is a pass, what is a fail. I'm not going to talk about a lot of the things that Keith brought up. But one of the major pieces that did come out of our meeting was that teachers were kind of in favor of maybe removing the pluses and minuses on a certain assignment. So instead of an A+ or an A-, we're looking at just an A, B, C, I, P, F grading system. And then at the end of the semester, based on those things, you're still going to get the pluses and minuses, but it might just simplify things for staff members and for students as far as the grading goes. A lot of teachers in that room, as they started to hear things, and I think the same thing happened with Keith, they kind of wanted to change their votes and make the shift. So that was another common theme throughout my meeting. Just looking through a couple of the notes, just to make sure we hit everything. The other question was, if we are to return to, to school, doesn't look like that's going to happen. But if we are going to return to school and we made the shift to a pass/fail, does that mean we're going to stick with pass/fail through the remainder of the year? Or would that change back to the grading system now that we're back in the, in the school? And the other big concern that they had was that one-size-fits-all thing based on the full-year classes, quarter classes, semester classes, and so on. And then I had about another 20 or so emails, and much like the responses that we got in the surveys, a lot of them were all over the place as far as what they wanted to do. So again, you know, Keith and I would love to say, hey, this is, you know, what the vast majority of our staff wants. But at this point, it's, it's split almost exactly down the middle.
Okay, that was terrifically enlightening. I really appreciate the work that you have both been doing to support your staff in general, but also to do some research with your staff into this question for us. I'd, I'd just like to point out for general knowledge that some states are mandating that their secondary-level schools go to a pass/fail system. Some states are allowing schools to choose on a case-by-case basis. At this point, I think, I think it's a good discussion for us to have. Did I see you waving your hand at me, Ms. Timmons? I see Ms. Patrick now. Ms. Timmons, did you wave a second ago?
No.
Okay, so Ms. Patrick.
And also, I know that Nate and Keith reached out to neighboring high schools. I believe it was 17 schools, is that correct?
I think there's 29 on that list that was shared with us. And of those 29, 26 are currently going to stick with their current grading system, although a couple of them are looking into potential for a pass/fail for quarter four.
And those are neighboring districts?
And those schools are only doing it for quarter four, or we don't know?
Yeah, that's what they're looking, the ones that have made the shift. Let me just pull up the data.
Yeah, it just says three of the 29, but it doesn't say, yeah, it does say for quarter four.
One of them says for quarter four, and the other two that have made the shift, it doesn't say for, if it's already started or if it's for quarter four.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Does anyone, Mr. Norris?
I'd just like to point out, I, from the time where we made our initial comments to now, I've gotten about 10 text messages, all advocating to not go to pass/fail. I just feel like if you go to full pass/fail for semester, for full year, for quarter classes, it just devalued all of that work that you did in that whole year, in the first half of the semester. Like, I understand the point. We're trying to reduce the stress as much as possible, because this is obviously a very stressful time. But if there was ever a compromise to be made where if you had already taken parts of these classes, so any full year or any semester classes, you stayed with the current grading system, and any quarter classes where you haven't begun yet, you would start with pass/fail. I know this is probably a logistical nightmare, but I feel like going to pass/fail and just giving someone a P when they could have earned a higher grade, which sets you apart in like the whole college admissions process, I think that changing that for those full year and semester classes just isn't a perfect response. And I know nothing's going to be perfect, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Ms. Brown?
Is that a possibility, what Mr. Norris just suggested? Can we do full-year classes as a grade? Can it be a combined system? If it's a full-year class or a semester class, make it a grade? Or, and then anything that starts in this final quarter, make it a pass/fail? Is that a possibility?
I think any, any change that we're going to make is going to have some issues or some, something that's going to happen with X2 or Aspen, which could be a challenge. But that's not to say that it can't happen. I think we just have to look into the ways of which, which it affects on the GPA and rank calculations that happen based on those.
And in your opinion, would that negate the effectiveness of going with the pass/fail option if we're going to split the, split it into two things? I mean, does it, does it make the decision to make some classes pass/fail kind of pointless if we split that option? Or does it make it more equitable for the kids who have been in an AP Calc class for the last year?
I don't know. That's a, that's a tough question to answer for me. I think it just, it probably depends on the motivation of the student, motivation of the parent, the teachers involved in the classes. I think it's just a tough situation all around to make it, you know, optional for kids or optional for teachers or, or specific classes.
We could, sorry, jump in just, I think we probably, you could probably put a grade in, but I don't think we can run GPA and class rank if that would be motivation for the student, I guess. Because what would a, a P calculate as? It's not going to get calculated. So I think when you get into those hybrid-type systems, we might create more questions than we have answers for, because we don't have a ton of answers right now for a lot of the what ifs that have come up over the last couple of days. The one thing I would say, though, and like Ms. Zim said earlier, everybody's dealing with this. I think when people are applying for colleges, there's going to be an informal asterisk next to the grades at the end of 2020. But I think, I think when we were going down this path, we were thinking we probably should have one way or another, just like-
I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Richards, and thank you, Mr. Burns, for that. I tend to agree as well. A lot of the Ivy Leagues have already gone to pass/fail. And I'm just, when we were talking about equity amongst students, I'm thinking about students who would like to be able to put forth more into their coursework right now, but, but can't because they have connectivity issues. They have, you know, issues with having access to a device. They have issues where they're working because they work at Market Basket and are holding down the fort for all of us. So, you know, I'm worried about, if we look at GPA and class rank and we're counting this semester, I, I worry that we put socio-economically disadvantaged students at a disadvantage, more so than they might already be. So I have a list of hands, so hang on, Ms. Brown. I have Ms. Bishop, and then I have Ms. Johnson, and then we can get back to, and then Mr. Gao, and then we can go back to Ms. Brown. Did I miss you, Ms. Patrick? No, okay. Okay, so, Ms. Bishop, are you still there? Where'd you go?
Yep, yep, I'm here. So, the eternal optimist I am, if we don't end up being canceled for the entirety of the school year, is there going to be, if, if the option of being pass/fail is on the table, however, you know, there is a grade assigned to the assignments that they're handing in, is it something we could revert back to if we end up going back into school? Or at least give the kids an option to audit the class, because the assignments that they're-
Ms. Bishop, I lost you. But your question is, if we were to go pass/fail, would, would students be able to choose to go back to their letter grade, would we return to class?
I think, you know, personally, just to throw something in, I think if we are going to make that shift, teachers would have to continue grading as they currently would on assignments and assessments. So that way, they're, they're tracking it with an X2, instead of giving an assignment a pass or fail for how it would calculate at the end of the semester. So that way, they could revert back to that. I think that would be the, the challenge. But then the question remains, if you're doing that, you know, should you just put a letter grade anyway?
I think that's what we're, we've just decided middle school teachers are doing. So, Ms. Bishop, did you get back? No? Okay, then, Ms. Johnson, and then Mr. Gao?
Thank you. I was just reading an email that came in from a student who was upset that we compromised over the one day of vacation time. Couple of things here. I also have an email that I'm reading, too. 26 out of 29 schools are sticking with the traditional grading. I don't understand why we probably wouldn't do that at this point. I mean, especially with GPAs, you know, for seniors. I don't have a problem with it just being A, B, C, D, you know, getting rid of that. But it came across to me that a suggestion would also be just give the students a choice. Shouldn't change for the teachers. Have the teachers grade the same, but students have the ability to opt into pass or fail by a certain date of May 15. If a student chooses pass/fail and they pass, then they get credit, but it won't calculate for GPA. So I want somebody's opinion on this.
I think it's brilliant.
It's a compromise, you know. But, you know, I think staying with the traditional, you know, even A, B, C, when 29, 26 out of 29 schools are sticking with it, why are we going to kind of reinvent the wheel for some of the things here? You know, I don't know.
I think, just to answer your question about the pass/fail or the option for students, individuals, I don't know if we could do it individually, just for running GPA and class rank at the end. I think that might be difficult to do, because the pass wouldn't necessarily count for some students, but it would. So I don't know if we could actually run a GPA, going back to what Keith said earlier.
I have to say, again, I strongly feel that this semester should not count towards GPA, because I think we have, even with our efforts of having 1,700 Chromebooks passed out, I don't think that we can assure equity. I think what we're going to find is the kids who come from families that have multiple devices and, and people at home in their houses who are available to be academic supports are going to move ahead or not fall behind as much. And kids who don't have that, aren't. So I really, even at the high school level, I question whether it's fair to use this semester as per GPA. And I know that is frustrating probably to hear for some of the high achievers. Ms. Zim, I'll put you on the list. Um, Miss Zim, I'll put you on the list. And could you put me on the list?
Heather on that?
And Ms. Odin as well. Yes, go ahead. You guys get to talk whenever you want.
That is, um, just the GPA thing, just to let you know, if we didn't um, include any GPA from this quarter that any full year classes, like AP classes or honors level, full years wouldn't be able to count in towards that GPA, even though they've already done, you know, three quarters of the school year under grade.
So frustrating. Okay, my list is Mr. Gao next, then Ms. Brown, then Mrs. Zim, then Mrs. Odin, then Mr. Norris. It's a long list, everyone's been waving at me. Okay, so, Mr. Gao.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, first, I just wanna follow up on that whole issue of connectivity and like that idea of equality throughout the district. I think this call is a perfect example of the challenges we can have with online schooling. Um, Ms. Bishop, I know your connection's going in and out, I don't know whether you're hearing this right now, but this is exactly some of the issues that we experience in classes. So I think it's for people with, with slower network speeds, which is something that they can necessarily help themselves. I- it's, it's a, it's a big, it's a big thing for them. Um, an additional point is that the AP College Board, they have already decided to test students in the AP level only on topics that were supposed to be covered in the first um, sections of the year. This essentially kind of suggests that they assume that the level of um, comprehension um, in, in the latter classes later throughout the year are definitely at a lower level than the, than the um, initial classes. Um, additionally, the idea of this indu- individual, in-individuality was suggested saying that like, you could give the students the choice of whether to pass fail or have the students choose a letter grade instead. Um, I would like to recommend against that because um, giving the choice is almost, i- i- it's, it's a very anxious driving thing. Because if you choose pass fail, then the colleges are gonna think, what do you have to hide from us? When it's really just an A minus or something that you're debating about whether you wanna show or not. So I think that uh, causes a, a few more issues than it really should. Um, and yeah, and I think that, that's about it, though, though, just the um, idea of connectivity, the equalizing the thing. Uh, it, the, the way AP College Board sees it, and also just recommending against individuality in this decision.
Thank you, Mr. Gao. Uh, Ms. Brown?
Thank you. That's actually great information about the AP College Board, that's a good, a good thing to note. Um, so as far as equity in the remote learning situation. Unfortunately, the kids that are disadvantaged right now are the same kids that are disadvantaged in the traditional learning classroom. Um, and we've also added in an additional layer of um, people who may actually be really, kids who have been really well adjusted. Who are now um, maybe, maybe they're pretty well adjusted at school, and maybe they're not economically disadvantaged. But maybe just being in their home is causing a layer of stress that wouldn't normally be there. So I would like to say, I think that point may not be the defining factor for this particular decision, in my opinion. Um, but also, um, I, this is just another idea, I know this is lengthening the whole discussion. Is it possible to keep the traditional grading scale so that you keep the GPA but offered? Is there an audit option offered? So that would be just, so keep everything, so the GPAs are the same. Or the GPA continues, so kids can still strive for that next, strive for whatever level of proficiency they would like to get. But have the audit option without pass fail to, for a kid that is putting in the effort, or they are in that disadvantaged category who's struggling, is that an option?
I think so, yes. Audit, one thing that we can't do is add any new uh, type of scale. So since audit in, in the current grade scale, an audit could be given for.
I, I think the only concern there would be um, trying to determine for next year's scheduling processes, what, what level or would that kid repeat the same class? It wouldn't be able to move forward, they're not gaining a credit, so um, how would that look? And, and what does that do for our planning for next year? We're in that scheduling, you know, timeline right now, so I think that adds a different, or leads to another question, I guess.
Just to clarify, because I did not understand that answer completely. So currently, there is an audit as an option, but you don't get the credit for the course.
Correct.
Correct. So if you were to allow students to choose audit, they, it would be like they never took the class. Under the traditional model that we have now.
Yeah, so a lot of times we use an audit now for a student that um, comes into school, say, you know, forty, forty days into the quarter and do a quarter class, and we put them into that quarter class for the last five days because um, there isn't an option for them to, to get it, but it allows them to kind of start to assimilate to the school and get to know some people and, and how things work. Um, not necessarily get the credit for it, um, but it also doesn't harm them.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay, uh, Mrs. Zim, uh, and then Mrs. Odin, and then Mr. Norris.
Uh, I just wanna make two quick points. Uh, when Mr. Burns was talking about the X two, and he was kind in saying there could be some glitches. I remember a couple of years ago, we had some glitches, uh, and they were a nightmare. They weren't just glitches, in my view, they were, they were monstrous, and I'm wondering if they could also have an expense. Because if we go to this duel, and, and maybe it would be worth the expense, but I'm saying it's something certainly we probably wanna consider when we're thinking about it. And if you go to this duel system that this gentleman suggested, um, I, I think that would also add a, a whole new level of bookkeeping, and we're already, everybody's already overloaded. And so I, I think that would be one of the negatives on that for me. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mrs. Zim. Uh, Mrs. Odin?
Okay, thank you. Now, I, I guess, when I, when I look at the first question, it's uh, a pass fail grading system for quarter four, semester two, or a full year. I see such a difference between quarter four and a full year. Um, I could understand a, a quarter pass fail where it's all remote learning. It's more difficult to grade, I think the equity issue comes in, SEL, authenticity of work, all of that. But for a, a full year, any teacher that has had a student three quarters of the year up until mid-March. I think they have a pretty good idea of what the student uh, can do and what they're like, what their work ethic is. And uh, for me, I would hate to see a student in a full year course not get a, a grade. I, I worry about the CTE programs, uh, quite frankly, the AP courses, and I understand some of our uh, language courses and some other courses might run a full year. And I think those, those students absolutely deserve to get a letter grade. Uh, and the teachers deserve to have that uh, right to give them a le- letter grade. I, I kinda, kinda think uh, if you're just looking at one quarter, I think uh, a pass fail might be easier, but if they can adjust something, but I mean, there, there are no easy answers to this, and I can understand why teachers are split fifty-fifty. And I, I don't envy any of them, but I, I know that they all wanna do what's best for the kids from everything I've heard from our teachers. So the, no matter, no matter what, this is gonna be a tough decision, and there's going to be problems with it. But I think we have to make sure that our teachers feel comfortable that they can grade fairly. They can defend the grade that they give the student, whether it's pass fail. If you go that way, I think an audit is uh, a real good option. If a student takes the course and there's the next course coming, and they just haven't reached the point where they're going to be successful in the, the next course, then you don't wanna punish them by giving an F. So I think the audit is a good, a good addition to the pass fail. But um, I, I worry about those students that have taken a course for a full year that if we go to pass fail, they wouldn't get a grade. I think we would have to have some type of a uh, a hybrid or whatever grading system to ensure that they get credit for what they're doing and what they need. Because of running start programs, they need that, so uh, it, it, there are no easy answers to this, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Odin. Mr. Norris, and then Mr. Guarino.
Um, so kind of working off a couple of last speakers. So I, I agree with what Ms. Odin said, where we can't just scrap the first three quarters of the year. And obviously, this is kind of a tough decision, but would it ever be possible to just keep pass, put pass fail for quarter four and not count that towards GPA or class rank? But the first three quarters, because as Joshua's saying, the um, AP tests are now only including topics and um, curriculum that was included while we were in school. So most full year classes are, tend to be AP classes, I think. So if we were to just go pass fail quarter four, you could get a GPA that calculates to your rank, calculates to colleges for the first three quarters that you were in the class, but the last quarter goes to pass fail, and that doesn't affect your class rank or GPA. I feel like either extreme, whether it's staying totally on uh, the curriculum or to- totally on pass fail is going to hurt more people than it's gonna help. I think somehow we need to come to a compromise that allows people who are in full year classes specifically because semester classes, we were probably at home, we're gonna be at home for more time than we were oh, um, in school. But for full year classes specifically, I think it's necessary that you get the appropriate credit for your course. I think a perfect way to do that would be to kind of count the first three quarters and go into pass fail the fourth quarter. I know we talked about doing the whole year, but I think that's kind of an extreme, and I think just going the fourth quarter. It's gonna be hard to get that Aspen all figured out, but I think that it would be a good compromise uh, to sort out this mess. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Uh, Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I am reluctant to change things. I um, to, to pass fail at the high school level, I think we should just leave it alone. And the reason is because right now, the whole district is forced to make adjustments because of this emergency. We are all in emergency mode, and we're trying to uh, adjust to that. Now, we're, we're making even, we would make even more changes. And to try to accommodate some people, but even those changes we make might not, you know, might hurt people who who are already used to the, to the system the way it is now. So I, I hate to sound like um, um, insensitive, but I think people need to learn to adjust and the, and, and people need to try to do, they need to rise to the occasion, okay? If this, if this um, emergency has, has uh, hurt them in some way because of the current status quo, then they really have to step up and, and, and rise, and, and rise above it. Um, because these are tough times for everyone, and um, I hate to sound insensitive, but I, 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 I think that changing things might actually sometimes, some, sometimes we try to fix things and we, we even make things even worse. So uh, I, I, I am reluctant to change at the high school level uh, to, to, to pass fail. I think we should keep the grade, grading the way it is, you know, keeping competencies. We, you know, teachers are trying to teach competencies and competency grading, even though it's, it's, it's a much more tougher job now. You know, because of the emergency, it's a lot more difficult. But I think people have to rise to the occasion and, 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 and try to make those adjustments. And let's not try to fix things, we might break it even worse. So uh, I, I'm just reluctant to change things, that's, that's where I am right now. Thank you.
Alright, uh, thank you. Uh, Mr. Gao?
Uh, thank you, Madam President, and also thank you, uh, Mr. Guarino for your uh, comments. You definitely have a good point that make, it's such a fragile time and, and, and changing things right now could potentially make things worse. But I would like to point out, um, with all due respect, that yes, definitely, we should rise to the occasion, I'm all for that. However, I'd like to point out that right now, the unemployment rates are skyrocketing, and a lot of these families, especially in Nashua, really cannot unfortunately um, afford the, 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 the higher network speeds or, or, or the necessary technology to um, in order to help them rise to the occasion. So I, I just wanted to, to mention that, but you definitely do have a good point that it is a very fragile time and changing things you need to be done with a lot of consideration. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Gao, and, and, oh, go ahead, Mr. Mrs. Zim.
Uh, can, should I put a motion? I'm thinking we should have a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we leave things as they are.
Well, I don't think we need a motion to leave things alone. I think we only need a motion to make changes.
Okay. I'm with you, thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. The only thing is, I don't have a problem leaving things the way they are. I think Mr. Guarino made a very good point here. I just wanna make sure, I mean, we've got the proficient, and we've got the fail, and the students in the middle. Even if we leave the grading, I just wanna make sure that if kids are having difficulties, that we're working with them and that audit piece comes in the middle there. So I wanna make sure that we're paying attention to the kids in the middle. So that's the only thing I wanted to bring up here with that audit. I don't know how we could put that in there, but I think that's very important here. Because we don't wanna see next year, because I hear what everybody says. I remember when I was on the board, we, we're coming into an extension that if kids, and it was in world language, that if kids didn't want proficient and they needed extra time, they did go in the following year in that extension, they didn't get credit for it. But it gave them that opportunity to get caught up, and so I wanna make sure, given the fact that this is a very stressful time for everybody, that kids that are struggling, we give them that opportunity to get caught up um, without them failing if they're attending and doing the work that they're supposed to be doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Norris?
I, I just have a quick question. So with our current grading system, we do have this audit that we've been talking about. Am I, am I right in saying that?
Yes, well.
Yes, I don't know that we use it for the same purpose that we're discussing. Typically, they have to have approval before enrolling in class.
So do you think we could change, or could start utilizing this if we stayed with the current grading system? We could utilize it more? Would it be, would it be fee- uh, feasible and easy to do?
Yeah, I think we'd have to have some guidelines around that, but I don't see why not. Keith, what do you think?
Yeah, no, I would agree. I think we just have to define what that is. I think Mr. Burns defined it pretty well, how we use audit before when a student, you know, enrolls pretty late into a semester, he will wanna, you know, be punitive with it, and that's where we mostly use audits. But if we had some discussion around what that meant, even, I think there's something could be defined.
Okay, so it sounds like at this point, um, we've had quite a bit of discussion without um, a substantive motion. Um, I think um, going forward, I would like to request um, some information um, from administration for our next meeting. Um, or perhaps a curriculum committee meeting, whichever one comes first, um, surrounding um, attendance um, in various levels of classes, um, and if people's opinions change as the situation progresses. Um, you know, and when the last date would be to make kind of a decision on this. Because um, I think we are in a global pandemic, um, uh, and I mean, nobody knows what's gonna happen tomorrow at this point. It feels very up in the air to me. Um, so I would like an update um, for our next meeting. Um, that way, if the board wishes to take up the, the discussion again, we have the information, we need to do so. Does anybody have any objections to that? I don't see or hear anyone saying that's a terrible idea, so let's do that. Okay, um, moving on. The, uh, well, actually, a couple of things. We're at um, new business now. And um, it is late. I know it's late because my daughter came to say goodnight to me. Alright, it's eight thirty-nine, we've all been sitting here for three hours. Um, m- my question to the board at this point, because we do have a policy that says we ought to be ending meetings in two hours or voting to continue. Um, it's, is uh, is there a willingness from the board to continue and push through this agenda? Um, are there things that we would like to put off um, to a future meeting? Um, I think that we have to talk about um, the meeting calendars um, tonight and possibly this letter. Um, does anyone else? Miss Zim?
If we put it off, how long are we putting it off to? I think that makes a big difference because, you know, time is irrelevant.
Hmm, well, I think, I think that's why we have to discuss the proposed calendars, where I've proposed some meeting times and dates. Um, even though it happens in the agenda after some of the other new business, but they're just kind of put on in any order. Uh, Ms. Raymond? Yes, Ms. Patric.
Um, as Dr. Mostly uh, mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, um, Keith and Nate and Dr.
Keith and Nate and Dr. Mosley and I have been discussing graduation. I think that's something that you could move forward and not discuss more tonight because we don't have a lot of information to share at this point.
Okay, I mean, I think I had asked for it to be on the agenda just to let people in the public know that it's on our minds. We're aware that, that we need to make a decision about it. I know other districts have pushed them off until late summer. Some districts haven't made a decision yet. So if we're in the still doing research stage, that's where we're at.
Yes.
Okay, does anyone have any objection to pushing that to the next meeting? Okay, so let's move that.
I have a question.
Yes, Dr. Mosley?
Can Keith and Nate, yeah, Keith and Nate leave the meeting? They, they have, be with their staff early tomorrow. I just want to excuse them. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I really appreciated your input this evening.
Thank you, Keith and Nate.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Timmons?
Madam President, on the agenda has public comments. Are we still on that?
Well, I guess the question is, what is the will of the board at this point? I would like to discuss, I want to talk about everything that's left. So for me, though, the one thing that we absolutely have to do this evening is talk about when we're going to meet again next. Go ahead, Ms. Brown.
Hello, so don't mean to be a stick in the mud, but we do still have a motion on the table to cancel spring break.
No, we don't.
We, they didn't get canceled. The motion is still on the table because it actually doesn't, it would supersede the other one. So I mean, I can remove the motion, but I, I don't want to, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I'm just trying to follow the parliamentary procedure because it actually would supersede the other one. And I'm not trying to be difficult here.
So in order to, so here's how it works. It goes on to the table. And so in Robert's rules on the, or how we have been using Robert's rules historically in this district, is when it's on the table, it means that we put it off and we're not discussing it until someone makes a motion to take it off the table and put it back on the floor for discussion.
Okay.
If no one makes that motion, it stays there indefinitely. And then when our session ends, which is the end of December, whatever's still on the table is gone now. We're not discussing it anymore.
Since it's time sensitive, would you like to remove that from the, would someone like to take that off the table or to?
So we have two options. We can move to take it off the table and vote on it, or we can just leave it there until it times out in December.
All right.
So for expediency sake, since we have to do roll call, I would just leave it there for now.
Okay.
Unless you really want another vote on it. Okay. Sounds like Ms. Brown does not really want another vote on it. Okay. So I am not getting any feedback from the board, so let's power through. Public comments at BOE meetings. I have been talking to the aldermen and getting some guidance from legal on this because the aldermen have suspended public comments for the duration of the, at their regular meetings, for the duration of the pandemic. As long as we're not meeting, as long as they're social distancing, they're not having public comments for safety sake. We, we have two items under this. The first one is that we have a policy, BEDH, public participation at board meetings, that requires us to have public comments at our meetings. And we also have a policy, BGF, which allows us to suspend any policies based on a majority vote of the board. I would propose that we suspend BEDH during the outbreak. Our schools are closed. There are some security issues and some administrative issues with having people call into Zoom that make it impractical. And so that is my suggestion. Mr. Guarino asked, I see you, Ms. Zee. Mr. Guarino asked earlier about budget and a public hearing for budget. I did check with legal, and because the city is having their public hearing on budget, we are not legally required to have one. The governor's order number twelve also suggests that we maintain social distancing and thus allows us to not have public comments during the state of emergency. So I saw Mrs. Zee and I saw Mrs. Johnson.
Would you like a motion, would you like a motion in that on the, on counseling public, public comment during, during the pandemic emergency?
Sure, that'll be great.
Then I make a motion that we cancel public, public, what's the word? Yeah, until after the pandemic crisis is over.
I second that. Seconded by Ms. Bishop? Did you wish to speak to it, Ms. Zee?
No, I think it's obvious that it's, for my mind, it's a security issue. That, that if you look online, it tells you that Zoom has had some unfortunate happenings with some of those public hearing things. People get into your system and then they, they do things they shouldn't do. And there's a consequence to that, as we all know, so thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Mrs. Johnson.
Thank you. I've been on a lot of Zoom webinar meetings for the last several weeks, and we've never had a problem with any of it. I can't see not allowing public comment. I mean, I think people should have the right to, you know, I think two comment periods are needed, what's on the agenda and what's not on the agenda. And I think in this time now, when we're making decisions out of the norm, I think if somehow they can give their comment, I mean, they can email us, yes. You know, I've been reading emails all night long with comments. But, you know, we're taking people's rights away to, to speak to us at the common period. And I think at this point in time, people have a lot of questions, they have a lot of concerns. They want a voices to us. Why should we take it away from them? So I won't be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Gao and then Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I do agree with Ms. Johnson that it, the public opinion portion is really important. However, I do want to caution the board on using Zoom and having the people public commenting actually join the call. Like, my classes have been like, we call it Zoom bombed before, and it's not pleasant. So perhaps like having written public opinions or something like that may, maybe better. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gao. Did I mute myself? No, I did not. Go ahead, Mr. Guarino.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I think it'll be okay to suspend public speaking because these are extraordinary times and it's only a temporary thing through the end of the pandemic. And some people, I mean, as I'm sitting here, my phone is going off and people are personal messaging me. Why should, you know, you want to talk about trying to influence? Why should they have more influence on someone who isn't personally messaging me on, on these issues? They're, they're getting a leg up on everybody else, and, and I don't think that's, that's right, but that's fair. So I, I, I don't think it'll be the end of the world. I don't think we're, we're, we're stepping on anyone's free speech rights because our, our email box is overwhelmed on certain issues. And we're, you know, our telephones are public and people can contact us anytime. So I have no problem with this because, like I said, these are extraordinary times. And it's, it, it's, it's just more difficult to do it. But it's only temporary for, for a few months, and, and I think, I, I think we'll be okay. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Guarino. Ms. Zee?
I would just like to piggyback on what he said. I can actually say that some of the emails I sent made a difference in how I voted this time as opposed to how I felt and would have voted last time. So the avenues are still open and we certainly want to hear from anybody. I mean, I'm, I think all of us are more than happy. I actually enjoy hearing from people because I'm locked up in this house too much now. So a, a voice of cheer from somebody from the public would be wonderful. Please feel free to call us all, it's the way I look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zee. I personally hate the idea of suspending public comments. I agree completely with Ms. Johnson on that. Having said that, I cannot support opening up our buildings to the public at this time to be able to talk. I cannot manage, it's difficult enough to manage a meeting with twenty-six participants and I'm on two pages. I cannot imagine if we have lots of numbers calling in that we don't know, trying to manage that and making sure that I do so in a fair and equitable manner. I, I just think it's, it's a lost cause. Having said that, the governor has issued, you know, an executive order specifically allowing this. And I think it needs to be limited, and I think we need to have something on our agenda saying where people can email their comments, which would be either setting up a comments email or simply using the boe@nashua.edu. One challenge with boe@nashua.edu is that our email inbox size is limited and we might all end up in email jail. If everyone who wants to comment sends us an email there, that has happened to me a few times in the last week or so. So is there any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Mr. Guarino, could you please call the roll?
On the motion to suspend BEDH public meetings until after the pandemic is over, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Zee?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to one.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is regarding a collaborative letter to the New Hampshire DOE. Dr. Mosley, did you wish to speak to this?
Yes, I just thought that there was, probably when we first embarked on the remote learning, there was a couple of things that surfaced. There was some concerns coming from the board around the, the implementation of this. Also, there were some concerns coming from my staff and from myself included around the service of special education kids and this remote learning. So the, the thought process again is that rather than having three or four different, oh, and also, Adam Marku and the union also expressed concerns around remote learning and some of the challenges. And so they started authoring a letter. So I thought, hey, how about we do it collaboratively? How about we get one letter, you know, that expresses the district's concerns, the entire district's concerns? And then we can all endorse that one letter and send it up if the board shall please. I think we've gotten some great feedback. I want to thank Marsha Bagley, attorney, Steve Bennett. They were the architects of this. I think my name is on it, but don't, that's not me writing that. I just want to be very clear, the real people behind that are Marsha and Steve Bennett, Adam Marku as well and his leadership team. So, but I just thought that it coming from the collective Nashville Public Schools would have a little bit more of an impact, but also would show solidarity as well.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. Yes, Ms. Zee?
And I have a question for Dr. Mosley. If they compose the letter, will the board then get a chance to review it before it goes out?
We already have it.
We already have it. Oh, okay.
Yes, so we have the letter. It was in our packet for this week. And we got it, we got it in its own separate email a few days prior to the packet going out. What I'm looking for from the board this evening is my name is also on it. I've read it. I agree with it. I'm happy to sign it. But we'll only do so with the direction of a majority vote of the board.
So I make a motion that we approve the letter?
Okay, I'll second it. And then Ms. Johnson, Ms. Timmons? Does anyone else have their hand up that I'm missing? No? Okay.
Thank you. In the letter, we talk about including staff overtime and hiring of additional outside providers. Do we have a figure on this? Because I'm sure the State Department of Education and the feds will ask about all this that we're adding in here. So I'm just kind of curious.
We don't have a figure yet because we don't know exactly what's going to have to happen. As I alluded to earlier, with ending school earlier, we're going to have more services to provide to students. So that's going to be a cost to the district. We are foregoing several evaluations at this time because we can't have face-to-face contact with students. So we're going to have several evaluations that need to be completed when we do get back into school, whenever that may be during the summer, maybe May, hopefully May, but I don't, I'm realistic as well. Over the summer, we're going to have to pay for people to come in and do evaluations and provide services to our students. And I don't know if that will go above and beyond the staff force that we already have because we are a large district and there's a lot of students who we will need to make up services for as well as evaluations.
Okay, so as a time, so by the end of the year, so this is not talking in school basically now. This is, we're projecting out after the school year's over with more?
Once, once remote, oh, there you are. I'm sorry, the screen's changed and you moved.
I'm kind of bouncing around.
I think we lost, I'm sorry, I'm just going to jump in. I think we lost Ms. Zee.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So to answer your question, Ms. Johnson, once remote learning is over.
Okay.
This, and we don't know when that will be yet. So we don't know exactly how many resources we're going to require to make up everything we've lost.
Okay, that's so, this is, once we're done with the remote learning and we're going back hopefully into normal times, this is where we got to do the makeup time to see what they've lost. Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I have Ms. Timmons and then Ms. Gilio.
I was going to make the motion, but Ms. Zee beat me to it, so that was it. Okay, Ms. Gilio?
Yeah, I have some concerns because this is the second piece of email that I did not receive. I did not receive the email that detailed the results of the survey. And I'm just looking on my other laptop to make sure, and I never received a copy of this. So somehow, I guess we need to look and make sure that I'm being included in everything.
So this is the same email.
Yeah, it's the same email, and this is the email that was.
Same email with the survey results. I didn't get that one.
Yeah, so the email was entitled, hold on one second, I will tell you what the title of the email is.
I have my other computer open.
Yeah, the email went to the boe.edu. And it was entitled.
Who sent the email?
Yeah, it was from Tara.
Okay.
Okay. And what was the date, do you know?
Yes, April tenth, and you are on that email chain.
Well, I don't know why I did not receive it.
So sometimes our email, depending on your Outlook settings, it can organize it weird.
You could look on, look in your junk.
In my junk email?
Yes.
I can imagine.
No, that's empty.
It may. But you are on that link. We are.
And I have no idea why I didn't receive it. And I am concerned because I do read all of the, everything I get. Excuse me.
So.
I do get.
I just.
Because now you're about to talk about something, and I read everything I get, and I have no knowledge of this letter that you're talking about.
No, I just pulled it up, and I apologize. It didn't go to BOE. It went to each of us individually. It's entitled Board Packet Agenda and Attachments from Ms. Kinsella.
And what date was it? The tenth?
Yes.
Friday, April tenth at three forty-four PM.
Okay, let me see.
So while.
Four attachments?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I pulled it up. I do have it.
Oh, good.
Apparently, I thought I already read it, but.
Okay, we did get the same letter a few days before.
Yes.
Also from Ms. Kinsella, I believe. Mr. Guarino?
I just want to tell Ms. Gilio that maybe she sees the, the first few pages, which are the, the agenda. But behind the agenda, she needs to scroll all the way down. I don't know if she's seen, maybe she got it and she doesn't realize that, that disinformation is behind the agenda and everything attached. Because that happens to me sometimes.
Just giving a thumbs up.
She's giving me the thumbs up. She's giving me the thumbs up, so I think she.
How that happened, and I'm so sorry to take up time with this, but definitely I did get it, so.
Yeah, that, that's no problem. That hap- it happens, you know, because we don't realize that we have this information and plans and it's behind everything else.
Nope, that's all right, and we want people to be informed before they make a vote. Otherwise, it's not helpful. Um, I'm tactile. I just print everything having to do with the agenda and attachments because I like to write on things. Um, so we've lost Ms. Zim. I don't see that she has come back. Do we have any other? Um, comments or questions regarding her motion to um approve um my signing of this letter?
Madam President?
Yes, Ms. Timmons.
It's four signatures on that letter, so.
Right, but the only person that um we need to approve to sign it would be me. Adam, can Mr. Mark Hoofen sign whatever he wants? Um, and I suppose we could motion to stop uh Dr. Mosley or Ms. Bagley from signing it, but. I can't think of any other circumstance where we have told an administrator how they can communicate with the Department of Education. Dr. Mosley communicates with them all the time, and I don't want to get in the middle of that.
I just want, I just pointed it out, that's all.
Yep, so I think our, our choices, I don't want to sign the letter at, you know. As though I'm representing the board if the board feels that I should not. That makes sense. Hey, Sandra's back. Awesome. Okay, um, so on the motion to approve me signing the letter. Mr. Guarino, can you call the roll?
Okay, on the.
Oh, I'm sorry, Doc- Dr. Mosley had his hands.
I just have a question. I, maybe it's logistical. You're signing the letter with the endorsement of the board behind you. Is that correct?
That's the motion, yes.
Okay.
I would not, if the, if the, if the board votes it down, then I would not feel comfortable signing it. As though I were representing the board, right?
Right, I just, you, you signed the letter and I wasn't, I maybe it's just like, I don't want words, but I just wanted to. Make sure it was like the board is endorsing the, the, this letter through your signature.
That was my interpretation, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready for the, for the vote, Madam President?
I think so.
Okay, uh, on the motion, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Zim?
Oh, Ms. Zim can't hear us.
Okay, uh, let me see if I can see her.
Nope.
I know.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, she says yes.
Yes. Okay, um, Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
I'm gonna abstain because I have not read the letter, um, but I'm glad that now I know where to find everything I need to be well informed, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. Um. Ms., Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
We have eight yeses, one abstention. The motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, I have just gotten um a note from E T V that they had um. Lost being on air for a few moments, um, and that was towards the end of our discussion on high school grading. Um, and they've asked me to update for people who were watching and missed the end of that, um, just to let them know, um, that. There was not a motion and there was no vote taken, so the current grading system for high school stands as is. Um, and if we need to reassess, we can reassess as we move forward. Okay, so, um, the next item on the agenda is the April and May. Um, proposed Board of Education meeting calendars, including, um. Do we include budget meetings on here? Including budget meetings, uh, because the aldermen are considering our budget. May seventeenth, I believe, although wait, that's a Sunday.
What is that?
Sixteen seventy. May seventeenth is a Sunday, so it must be um, May nineteenth. So we need to have a budget that we want them to hear before May nineteenth. Um, so, um, has everybody had a chance to look at the proposed calendars? Ms. Gilio?
I'm sorry, I'm the troublemaker tonight, but I'm, I'm looking at the calendar now, but um. May nineteenth is a Tuesday, according to the calendar I'm looking at. It's the first and third Tuesdays of every month when I'm not available.
Yeah, that's fine, Ms. Gilio. That's the night that the aldermen are considering the Board of Ed budget, so. Um, usually Dr. Mosley, uh, Mr. Donovan and myself, at least, um, go to the alderman's. Um, budget meeting, um, and Dr. Mosley and uh, Mr. Donovan present the budget that the board has approved. Um, and then I'm just there. So.
Okay, thank you.
So people can come, but it's not required.
Okay, great, thanks.
Um, okay, um, so, um, I worked with Tara, um. To make some suggestions. This is not set in stone, but I would like the board to meet regularly. Uh, while we were shut down because it seems like our agendas are getting um cumbersome, and it might be helpful to have. Uh, two smaller meetings rather than one larger meeting um during the pandemic. Um, so I guess I'm looking for, because we had a motion at the beginning of the year to set a specific. Calendar for the year. This would be a change from that calendar that we all agreed to for the main budget meetings. Budget, the main Board of Ed meetings. Um, I'm looking for a motion from the board to approve um for April and May only. Uh, yes, um, Ms. Brown?
Um, I think we should probably consider moving the uh, meeting on. The uh, April twenty-seventh. Because that's the day that we just gave people off school.
Oh, you're correct. One, two, three.
Unless you'd like to bring my motion back on the table and we can vote on it and get that fixed.
On the floor, okay, um. No one is jumping on that, Ms. Brown, so, um. Ms. Gilio, does Tuesday the twenty-eighth work for you? Yeah, okay, she's saying yes, so.
Yes.
Um, so let's move the twenty-seventh to the twenty-eighth for April. So that's two weeks and a day from tonight. Um, does anyone have any other um quills with the main Board of Ed meetings? Um, the. Okay, the committee meetings are proposed, and I would suggest that the. Um, committee chairs work with their committee if they need to be changed and then let the rest of us know. And the public know as we would normally notice everyone, um, if this isn't going to be what we follow. Um. Go ahead, Ms. O'Gara. I can't hear you. You're on mute. Okay.
We talked about having a board meeting on May sixth for the timing of the renominations. If we're having a board meeting, is that a full board meeting on the twenty-eighth?
So on the, wait, a full board meeting on the twenty-eighth of April?
Yeah.
Then budget on the sixth, and then a special board meeting following budget for the.
Uh.
So, oh, so we have a board meeting on May fourth. I would call that a special board meeting for renominations.
So it's gonna be May fourth?
Yeah. Is that too soon?
No, we were planning on the sixth. It's tight, but it's okay.
Okay, just only because.
Get everything ready the Fri- the Friday before anyway, Dana. How do you watch? Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so.
It's just that we're gonna have one after the twenty-eighth is a board meeting and then May fourth?
So the twenty-eighth would be a regular board meeting like tonight, but hopefully with a less challenging agenda. And then the fourth would be a, I would call that a special board event meeting regarding nominations, renominations.
All right.
Right?
Yeah, it's just something we want to do the other.
Yes, do you want me to make it a different thing?
It's up to you.
Okay, I don't. Because I, we have to get the budget. We have to figure out the budget so that we can go for the alderman and attack when we're supposed to.
Okay.
So. Okay. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the calendar, um, as we have discussed this evening. Anyone?
So.
Okay, I have lots of people. I'm gonna say Ms. Timmons and Ms. Zim. Did you both say something?
Yes, so moved.
Okay.
Need a second.
Yep.
Seconded.
Yeah.
So.
So we have, we have Timmons to make the motion. We had Zim seconded it, and we had Ms. Gilio waving. And we had Ms. Bishop also willing to second it. Okay. On the motion to approve the calendars for April twenty-twenty and May twenty-twenty, um, as discussed this evening.
Um, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Um, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
We have nine, nine in favor, zero against. Motion carries.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, we discussed a little while ago that um, we don't have an update regarding graduation yet. So we'll put that off till the next meeting. Um, and then, um, what's left on the agenda is public comments, which we've been getting our emails all evening. Um, go ahead, Mr. Guarino.
I know that Dr. Mosley had talked about um prom also, um, and some alternatives, but I hope when we do uh get the. Talk about uh graduation, that we can also talk about prom.
Okay, thank you.
Because that, that's been an issue uh that, that a lot of people have talked to me about, and so I hope. Talk about that too. That, that's all, just quickly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll take note of it. Put it on the agenda.
Ms. Raymond, I have a, a question.
Yes, Ms. Odin.
Um, on, on our website, it says, uh, this professional development. Uh, April fifteenth and again on April thirteenth, and I was just wondering, is the district still doing professional development? Early release? Both days are scheduled for early release?
Go ahead, Dr. Mosley.
That's my understanding if it's posted there. Um, yes, I believe so. I, I actually have, Dorothy and Donna had left the call. Um, they handled that. I think Donna's still there, but I believe that was, um, I can follow up on that to, to the board. I, I just can't close out of my email right now, uh, because I'm afraid I'll close out of the, out of, I can't close out and shake, take a look because I'm in the meeting right now. But I can certainly take a look at it and get back to you. I just.
I, I, I'm just wondering because if, if students are gonna have a reduced time in school, or if the. The teachers are going to have an afternoon session, I just, I just think we ought to let people know how that's going to be handled.
I.
I was gonna say the plan that was presented at our last meeting was um, half a day of educational. Um, online activities and then half a day of um, planning, grading, professional development time.
Getting that, it follows that structure. If it's there, it's there for a reason. Certainly happy to talk about it and, and follow it. I didn't see it on the agenda, so I'm not, I could have told you and gi- given you more information, just. I don't know. I was looking at the agenda. I thought that we were talk, discussing other things, but happy to give you that more information. Tomorrow.
Oh, sorry, it was just a question when I was looking at the website. I uh, I just had that question. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Odin, Ms. O'Gara.
I wanna say that I think that there's two in that one week because one is from one instructional lo- level, the other one is for another.
Yeah.
Yes, I think you're correct, Ms. O'Gara. Okay, um, so we have two non-public items. Um, and then we had um, public comments left, which we've um, agreed to suspend, and then we have board me, board members comments. Um, does anyone ha- uh, what I propose is that, uh, if we have board member comments, we do them now. And then we have our um, two non-public items so that um, the. Um, E T V people and the other people who don't need to be here for the non-public can um, excuse themselves. Any, any objections? Okay, seeing none, um, board member comments. Um, I'm gonna go by the way people are arranged on my screen for convenience. Um, Ms. Johnson, do you have board member comments this evening?
I think I'm good for right now.
Okay, Ms. Gilio?
I just wanna say that, um, the decisions that we had to ta- to talk about tonight, everything is, is so very difficult. And I appreciate everyone else sharing their thoughts and their feelings on things because I don't find any of these choices easy ones to make. And so thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. Mr. Guarino?
Um, I, I really don't have any comments. I, I just agree with what Ms. Gilio said. These are, these are some tough decisions. We can't. We try to please everyone. You can't please everyone and accommodate everyone, and these are tough times. Uh, so I, I, I just, um. Ask people for their patience and understanding.
Thank you. Ms. Timmons?
No comment.
Okay, um, Ms. Brown?
Um, I wanna say how grateful I am for the hard work of the teachers and the administration during this hard time, this difficult time period. Unprecedented events going on. I realize you're all working extra overtime in a fashion that you are not used to. And um, I commend you. I commend the families for their flexibility and working so hard. I wanna say how impressed I am with our two student representatives on this board. Um, you guys are bringing up some really brilliant points that even us adults, I don't think necessarily thought about, so I really appreciate. Both your service and your articulate perspective, so I really appreciate that. Um, and I would also, this is a, goes ba- more of a board issue. I wanna express my um dissatisfaction about indefinitely tabling issues. I think it is a bad practice. And I would like to not do that in the future. So, um, thank you all very much, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brown. Ms. Zim?
Uh, I would like to thank the, the young gentleman who gave me the expression zoom bomb. I'll remember that. Everybody have a great night.
All right, thank you, Ms. Zim. Ms. Bishop?
Yep, what Ms. Brown and Ms. Zim said, you guys took the words right out of my mouth, um, again, because my mouth is not working on this thing tonight. But I am super impressed with the students. You guys really shine a light on, on all of the good things that we're doing with our schools. You guys are articulate, you're smart, you disagreed without getting disagreeable. Um, I appreciate you coming to the table with the differing opinions and educating us on what is working well for you guys and what isn't. Um, I'm just massively proud to be a part of this board when we have students like you here representing each other, so thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Ms. Odin? Jody, are you there?
I'm sorry, yeah, I was muted. Um, I just wanna thank the students. I thought they uh, they did a really good job. Representing different sides of this issue, and this is tough. Uh, you look at our teachers, our teachers have. You know, they're split fifty-fifty. There are no easy answers to some of these uh, issues we've dealt with and. All we can do is do our best and try to make it fair for everybody, so. I just wanna thank everybody. Thank all our teachers and our administrators for all their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Odin. Um, everyone has said everything that I feel. Um, it has been. Um, a very um, long evening with some very robust conversations, and I appreciate everyone. Um, taking the time to share all the information and all the thoughts that um, we each bring to the table. Um, this is not easy. We're in some extraordinary times. Um, and I know that everybody here um, was trying to do um, the best that we can. Um, for our students and our community, so thank you, everybody, for that. All right, so, um, at this point, I would entertain a motion to uh go into non-public. Um, under RSA ninety-three A three-two A. No. Hold on, uh, I'm sorry, um. C and E, yes?
So moved.
So moved, correct.
Seconded.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. So. So RSA ninety-three. RSA ninety-one A three-two C and E. Mr. Guarino, could you call the roll?
On the motion to go into non-public, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. At nine twenty, we are in non-public.
Okay.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, Ms. Patric. Mr. Gao and Mr. Norris, this is where you leave us?
Thank you.
You.
Much.
Bye. Thank you, guys.
Good night.
Good night.
Out of non-public and back in public session as of nine fifty-seven P M. I'm looking for a motion to seal the minutes of our non-public session.
Move to seal the minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Odin. A lot of people seconded. I think Ms. Johnson was first. Mr. Guarino, can you call the roll?
Okay, on the motion to seal the minutes, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. I'm, I'm looking for a motion regarding the bus contract. Anyone? I'll make it. I move that we pay our first student eighty percent of their base daily rate of the bus contract until May first. Everyone seconded it, but I'll go with Ms. Zim because I saw her first. Probably because you're right in the middle through me, Ms. Zim.
Oh.
Okay, do we have any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Guarino, can you call the roll?
On the motion, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Abstain.
Okay, I have eight yeses, one abstention. Motion carries.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Yes, you may, Ms. Zim. Can we have a second?
I'll second it.
His motion.
Okay.
Okay, on the motion to adjourn.
On the motion to adjourn, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Zim? Ms. Bishop?
Well, I have a couple more points to make. No, I'm just kidding, yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries nine to zero. We are adjourned at nine fifty-nine P M. Thank you, everyone.
We can't, everybody. Thank you for sticking with us.
Have a great night.